Okay, welcome. It's six o'clock. Welcome to the April 1st, no joke, meeting of the governing body. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz, she'll provide the invocation. Stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Good evening. Stay with me just a second here. Jill, if you want to come to the podium. Jill Rice is the Executive Pastor at Fellowship Highcrest. She has lived and worked in Topeka for the last 12 years and is proud to call Topeka home. She is passionate about seeing the whole flourishing of neighborhoods. She does this by serving in her role as a pastor and different volunteer roles through the Highcrest NIA, Cent Topeka, HCCI, and Shiny County K, Shiny County K-State Extension. Jill will help anybody, and she did not put in here that she's married to Jay, and she did not put in here that she just had twins. They are darling little girls. And she served as the NIA president until she went into labor. I think we finally had to tell her to sit down. So she is committed to the Highcrest area, and we appreciate her and her good works. I present to you Jill Rice.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pray with me. Father, we come to you tonight, and we always want to come with you to thanksgiving for how you have guided us through our day, the grace and mercy that you have given us, and the promise of your presence. We also come and lift heavy hearts to you for youth in our community that have been struggling with their mental health, struggling with suicide and death. Father, we lift up those families to you. We ask that you would wrap comfort around them as they are grieving and processing that, Lord. We ask that you would bring resources and equipment alongside their friends and their families as they need that in this time, Lord. We know that you are the provider and the healer, and we ask that over them. God, for tonight, we ask that you would give us wisdom as we are hearing different things and making decisions, Lord, and pray that you would continue to guide the decisions that we're making here tonight. And we ask that you would give us grace and mercy in our words as we speak with one another. Father, we lift up all of these things, and we pray them in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll proceed with the agenda. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mayor, we did have a recognition. Didn't you want to do that prior two-roll card? Do you want to go ahead of it?
Pardon?
We did have a recognition for the McVicker crosswalk. Did we want to do that prior two-roll? Is it on there? Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. That's fine. Okay.
So we have the recognition of the McVicker crosswalk, and Councilmember Miller, did you want to take over?
Yes, thank you very much, ma'am. Mayor, appreciate you. Crosswalks. Walking to and from school can be a fun and healthy activity for children. It creates important moments that are shared with caregivers and/or other siblings that are some of the most memorable parts of the day. You will find kids and families happy, excited, nervous, upset, confused, and all the other range of emotions that can come from what's about to be or reflect on what was throughout the day. The same goes for moments that we share in a car. Drivers and passengers can often have great conversations while moving along the roadways, so much that sometimes we forget about the other pedestrians that may be utilizing those same roadways at different times of their journey. I'm sure a lot of us remember times that we get to our destination and don't remember chunks of the travel, mostly because of the conversations or our brain going into autopilot as you ponder life outside of that incredibly dangerous and important task we are currently doing. It's those moments that can be the most frightening for pedestrians because they know you are supposed to recognize them and stop, and not sure if you are on the same page as them. Crosswalk warning systems are designed to provide a visual warning to the drivers that a pedestrian is about to cross the road. Enhanced with bright flashing lights, they alert drivers to slow down and proceed cautiously, reducing the risk of a collision. They are especially effective during the hours when it is dark outside, when visibility is reduced. The systems help schoolchildren develop safe habits by reinforcing the importance of using crosswalks and following traffic signals. They help create safer environments for pedestrians and reduce the stress of crossing the road for both children and adults. That's why I'm so proud of the team for responding quickly to the needs of the children with whom a couple we will hear from today, and making sure that they, and every pedestrian that uses that intersection, feel safer using the streets they need to utilize. And big thanks to the City Manager's Office and Steve in the Public Works Department, but the most special thanks goes to the Traffic Operations Manager, Dwayne Morris, and his team. They put the safety and well-being of our children and pedestrians of District 6 in Topeka above all else, and that's what we should strive to do every single day. Thank you very much. And if I don't, I think I see him up here, if the students from Randolph and their caregivers could please come up to the podium. I would like to say we are so extremely proud of all of them being here today. This could be a stressful, stressful moment, and it takes a lot of courage. So if I could have everybody, please give them their full attention as they try to step up to the mic for this incredibly stressful moment.
Oh, it's okay, honey.
Hi, my name is Eliza Shum. I'm in 4th grade at Randolph Elementary School, which is in District 6. I'm coming tonight to thank you for putting a blink in my address to King King McVicker, which will help people cross safely at the intersection. A lot of people cross this intersection rather than on the way, whether they're on their way to or from school or walking their dogs. And before the light, every time I would walk around my bike to school, nobody would stop me. And in my mind, it was annoying. Cars are supposed to stop for people at the crosswalk, but a lot of times, at least four or five cars would go by without stopping. It was not safe for kids or adults to cross, and we have needed a way to alert cars to look out for people and kids. I talked to my friends at school, including Mealy and Ray, who are here with me tonight, and we all have the same experience. I had the idea to come talk to you after Councilman Duncan came to my Cubs game meeting recently. One talking to us about what the city council does, he mentioned you fix problems that people have around the city. One example he mentioned was potholes, and I thought, hey, if you can fix potholes, you could definitely fix this intersection and make it safe. I know our neighborhood had brought this up before, but nothing had been done. A traffic say had already shown there was a need, and my goal was that after hearing from me and my friends, you would take action. I know a lot of people in Topeka probably have their thing, and they would like you to do. And I also know you can't fix every problem people have in the city. So a special thank you to my district councilman, Miller, and to councilman Duncan for listening and for acting. Thank you all for thinking this is a problem worth fixing and for working to fix it now rather than waiting until summer. Most all, thank you for making this a safer intersection for everyone.
Her name is Ava, and she worked together on writing something. She's going to have me read. So hello, councilmembers. My name is Ava, and I'm in 2nd grade. I attend Randolph Elementary School with my sister. We walk and ride to school most days. I thought before the new safety light that crossing McVicker was not safe, and I know other kids at my school walk too, and I like that they can walk safely now too. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. An honor for letting them participate in this evening's meeting. Okay, now we'll go with roll call.
All right. Mayor Padilla?
Here.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Valdivia Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Banks?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Hofer?
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Thank you. We'll move on now to appointments, if the clerk will read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Arti Gonzalez to the Civil Service Commission to fill a term ending April 1, 2029. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Mary Monzick to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for a term ending February 7, 2027. C is a committee appointment recommending the appointment of Vanessa Evans to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Review Committee for a term ending April 2, 2027. D is a committee appointment recommending the appointment of Walker Bassett to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Review Committee for a term ending April 2, 2027. And E is a committee appointment recommending the appointment of Trey George to the Affordable Housing Review Committee for a term ending April 2, 2027.
Okay. We've heard the appointments as read. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilman Miller. Although, oh, we have to take a roll call because of him being on Zoom. Go ahead.
All right. Councilmember Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay. For those who are attending today, Arti Gonzalez, Vanessa Evans, and Walker Bassett, and Trey George, I see you're in the audience. If you would stand so we can recognize you for your service for the city. Thank you all. Move on to Agenda 3, presentations.
All right, the first presentation, we have the Human Relations Commission Annual Report.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. Are we ready to go?
When you're ready.
All right. Well, my name is Zach Saret. I am the Chair for the Human Relations Commission, and also have the honor of being on the Citizens Government Review Committee.
I'm Carmen Romero-Nichols. I am now the co-chair of the Human Relations Commission.
She knows what she's doing. All right. Our mission is to conduct outreach and educational activities that promote justice and cultural understanding and improve relationships among all people in the city of Topeka.
Maybe not. There you go.
There we go. We are a nonpartisan elected body for two-year terms. We support the efforts to eliminate prejudice and further goodwill among all people of the city, and promote positive relations among our citizens and guests through community outreach. We promote and facilitate public forums on issues of interest and concern, participate in outreach activities and public education, and partner with groups that share similar goals. Now we'll go into what all that means.
So we just had elections. Last year, I was chair, so I will go over our accomplishments and initiatives for 2024. We connected with ARP last year and became an age-friendly city, so Topeka is now an age-friendly city. We connected with the National League of Cities Work Group, attended National Night Out, hosted a Holiday Posada, and attended and represented the HRC at multiple community events throughout the city.
And then for 2025, as part of earning our age-friendly city status, we do have a community survey out now. For those of you who aren't aware, it should be pretty much all city resources. I know that it's playing on the city public channel as well. There's a QR code and everything. We designed it to be user-friendly, not too long, but gives us the information that we need to make sure that we're doing our part to maintain being an age-friendly city, making sure that all citizens of the city of Topeka have the resources they need. And that goes into accessibility and housing and all sorts of things, so that's super exciting. The other thing is that at the, kind of close to the tail end of last year, we adopted kind of a recognition of the Crown Act. What that is, is a nondiscrimination policy based on natural hair types. That is something that the state legislature has considered for some time, and it is not currently included in the Topeka nondiscrimination policy. Because of some legal concerns, we brought it to the Policy and Finance Committee, and so the city, we would like to thank you for adding that to the city's legislative agenda for the legislature. It gets complicated because we can't adopt it at a city level, or the state would make us take away other nondiscrimination policy sections. So we didn't want to help one group and hurt another, so we're trying to take these steps to make sure that we're doing everything we can as a city to make sure that everyone has the right to succeed and to move forward. We've already heard from a couple of present, this is not on the slide, so I apologize, but we've already had the pleasure of hearing from all hands on deck, talking about ending chronic homelessness in the city, as well as we'll be hearing from the city Housing Department as well. We want to really get ingrained in what the city is doing. We want to be that body that represents citizens as far as what can we be doing as a city and as city representatives to make sure that we're doing all in our power, to make sure that we're promoting cultural understandings, but as well as making sure that everyone has the chance to succeed. We're kind of reinventing what it means to be a Human Relations Commission. That means different things to different cities, and especially in our tiptoe around this, in our current environment, what this means. So we think that we have a fantastic team. We are looking for a couple of new members, although we have some potential applications in, hopefully. But we're hoping to add to our team. We've got a picture of our team last year at our Holiday Posada. We have enjoyed great partnership with the governing body and with city staff. We could not do this without Zaina and without Monique. They have been fantastic for the HRC, so we definitely want to give them a shout out. But we look forward to having another great year, making sure that we're doing our job representing our citizens. And with that, we're open for questions.
Questions? Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for presenting today, you two. I am curious, as you guys are looking for someone who else is looking to join, what kind of things could they expect as joining the HRC?
Sure. So outside of our regular monthly meetings and the great team to be a part of, I mean, we are really trying to make sure that this is a team that makes a difference in the city, as all the boards and commissions want to do. But for a long time, we've heard that, what does the HRC do? What are you for? And that mission has changed over the years. But we want to make sure that everyone that wants to join the HRC has a dedication to just making Topeka better, focusing on the citizens. You know, we're talking with business partners, and we've worked with the Small Business Development Center and talked about how to make sure that we have access to business resources and initiatives in multiple languages. So we're working with the business community. We're working with individual citizens. We're working with national organizations to make sure that the city is at the top of our game when it comes to representing our citizens and making sure that we have the right environment for growth. So it's people that are dedicated to the city that want to create some positive change.
And that want to be involved. We don't go to every community event, but we certainly try to represent the HRC and the city of Topeka.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Zach, you mentioned that you're looking for a couple more to join the committee? So I would imagine this is a good time to put the recruitment banner out right now.
That would be great, yeah.
Even if you have applications right now, that doesn't mean that they'll follow through. So anybody who's still interested, I think you can encourage them to put in an application.
Absolutely. I know that our current commissioners have been out in the community, talking to people that they know might be interested. For anybody listening and/or anybody in attendance today, we always are looking for a pool of applicants that, again, want to be involved and engaged in making sure the city is creating positive change.
Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your service. Just to follow up on Councilman Miller's question, let me not misspeak, but people would expect a monthly meeting, and then how many outings or other engagements each month? What kind of, what would they be signing up for?
You get out of it what you put in, so definitely a monthly meeting. We do have a couple of subcommittees. We've got education. We've got advocacy. I'm going to miss the other one. We just, these are fairly new.
Planning?
Events. There we go. So they get out of it what they want. Our advocacy team is mostly meeting as needed. We'll send some messages and start including city staff when we need to, when it comes to that time. But we also understand that everybody leads busy lives. You know, we're donating some time, and yeah, we do have Zoom options as well. We want to be respectful of everybody's time and those that come to talk to us. So at least an hour's worth of meeting every month. And then, of course, we want to promote the events that are already going on. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel. Topeka has amazing cultural events throughout the year, so we want to make sure that we have some representation at some of those things. So I imagine this summer's going to be a pretty busy one. But, you know, we don't assign people to go to events, but we encourage our members to attend events and network with the community around them.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Again, thank you, Zach, Carmen. Thank you for all your work and for your committee as well.
Thank you so much.
Posada was great.
There's some great food there.
Madam Clerk, your second presentation.
All right, the second presentation we have for the Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority Annual Report.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Scott Tullmans. I'm the Chair for the Topeka Metro Board, and tonight we also have with us Robert Nugent, our General Manager of the Metro, Candace Stiles is our Vice Chair of the Metro Board, and Rod Miller is our Head Financial Committee Member and Board Member as well. All right. Our ridership on our fixed routes, although slow, has continued to rise since the drop of the COVID pandemic. We had made some changes in routes and the level of service based on ridership levels since the end of 2019. Although we continue to see ridership increase, it's still unclear if we will see the levels of ridership that we had prior to COVID. As we know, things have changed due to COVID, and there are more people working from home. This has tended to cause a reduction in our choice riders versus our captive riders throughout the time. As you saw, can see on the chart, in January, we had a downclimb in ridership, but this was mainly was due to having to cancel service for two days due to the abnormal snow that came in that weekend. As I'm sure you're aware of, our lift service is mandated by the American Disabilities Act or the ADA. We can continue to provide this lift as cost-effective as possible by operating with a combination of our resources within and contract with a local private provider. Like our fixed services, our lift continues to provide an increased number of rides each year. And as you can see on the chart at the bottom there, Topeka Metro provides this service at the lower cost than almost all other regional providers. Our Metro On Demand, or our MOD, is entering the final year of the three-year pilot program. This pilot was implemented with the possibility of replacing some of the poorly performing fixed routes within the service area. As you can see from this chart, the MOD is the highest-cost service the Metro does provide, so it's obvious that MOD will not be a good option to replace these services and some of our, some of our poor-performing routes. But as a budget process, we are in the process of evaluating the MOD to determine if changes need, what changes need to be made in order to continue as economically feasible service. Many transit providers in our area are facing many hard decisions as a result of budgetary issues. The Kansas City Transit Authority is looking at service cuts. Lawrence is possibly looking at reintroducing the fares for their services, and Unified Governments are looking into potential changes in their contracted services. For example, it's been since 2009 that the KDOT has increased any of its funding. Topeka Metro could be faced with similar tough decisions with the actions taking place within the federal government right now, uncertainty of future funding is. And then in the last few years, we've revamped our hiring process as a way to both recruit and to retain operators, but this continues to be a struggle for us. With the aging of our facilities and increase in the cost of operations, we also have ongoing expenses of maintaining our infrastructure, like parking lots at our facilities, replacing roofs, and updating HVAC systems within our buildings. Vehicle costs have been rapidly increasing over the last few years. Not only have there been increasing replacement costs, but we have also been struggling due to the decline in the number of manufacturers for these type of vehicles. Again, I thank you for having us here, and I will entertain any questions.
Deputy Mayor?
Now, I know you mentioned the snow earlier. I was kind of aggravated that the snow wasn't removed from the stops, especially the ones with, you know, the benches and all that kind of stuff, to the point of some places was piled up so high that people were almost standing at a 45-degree angle, trying to stand there, wait for the bus. And then you look at people that ADA would not have been able to use those areas to be able to get on the bus. It was very long after the snow before those areas were even cleared. And to me, it's like the bus driver should be able to call in right away and say, hey, this stop is needing cleaned, and because some people, it is, or dependents. That was just kind of my big disappointment of the snowstorm was those stops were just, none of them that I drove past were, that had the benches or the ones that were supposed to be cleared, were cleared in any way.
I can only assume that our maintenance division was getting out there as quickly as possible into all the stops that we have throughout the city, and so.
We have 600 stops in our system, right? We have about 300 that have amenities, about 150 of those have shelters. We had a tremendous amount of snowfall, as you well know. Our problem was, when you clean the streets, where does Our problem was, when you clean the streets, where does that snow go? It goes on the sidewalks, right in front of our shelters. You get in with three or four feet of snow, it's tough to get it out of there. By the time we could get out to do it, most of the snow had melted to the place where it was just big icebergs. So it's almost impossible to remove it. Did it have some effect on those with disabilities using the service? Yes. It also had effect on everybody using our service. That's why you see some of our ridership numbers and all that stuff going down as a result.
To me, those areas were just completely unsafe. They were slick. It could be, I mean, to me, getting out there to salt or anything like that, it just, it was a very big disappointment and a safety issue for me, for people. Like I said, when they're having to stand like that on a snow pile, it's just kind of.
I understand that.
And even if the pile in front, from the street to the sidewalk was a mess, it could have been even cleaned for the sidewalk part from the stand there. But I saw usually 10, 15 of those like that, that I really, really noticed. That, like I said, it was a very big disappointment that, like I said, some of those people, that's what they depend on for transportation. And to have to put them into an unsafe situation is unfortunate.
We were as frustrated, if not more than anybody else with the service. Nobody could go down sidewalks. People were walking in the streets. Nobody was cleaning sidewalks. We were as frustrated as by us. We were overwhelmed, just like the city. Everybody was overwhelmed with the snow. I wish we could have done better. We're trying to put some things in place right now to hopefully address it in the future. But if we have a major snowfall like that, we're probably going to run into equally as difficult situations. So, but we hear you. We hear you. We had the same frustration.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question and then a comment. I will say, if you have said this, I apologize because we are having bad reception on the Zoom, and it's very echoey and tiny. But I wanted to ask, do you have a hiring freeze right now? And are you short of drivers?
No, we do not have a hiring freeze, but yes, we are short of drivers. We are continuing to hire and bringing them in, but we have not reached full capacity of operators.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And then, kind of extending on to Deputy Mayor Pell's remarks. I mean, you know, we all know that it was a historic snow. I don't know how often this is a problem with, you know, some of your little bus waiting stations. You know, a lot of elderly are there, a lot of people with disabilities, et cetera. I don't know if there could be any benefit with trying to have some kind of dialogue with the city, if anything could be done or not. That you're putting things in place is definitely a move in the right direction because those are your customers. But yeah, I definitely understand it was hard on everybody. So thank you, Mayor.
If I may ask, do you have a breakdown at all of the demographics of your ridership as far as age or anything like that? Or a particular part of town that is one of your best routes that really utilizes the MTAA?
Our ridership comes from just about everywhere in our community. I mean, it's one thing about Topeka, it's, we don't have any real dense corridors and dense areas. So our ridership comes from just about everywhere across the board. If you look at the ridership per route, there are some routes, like the 29 that goes across the south side of town that probably doesn't have the ridership as some of the routes do. But the 6th, the 10th, 12th, Huntington, all of those kind of east-west routes have a good amount of ridership in it. Our ridership and the people that we're transporting are across the board. It could be, you know, somebody that's retired, and then we have school kids that are using it too. So usually about 49% to 50% of our ridership is work-related. We know that for sure, but when it comes to the age, most of the people get on our bus, we don't know who they are, we don't know their name. Our operators might know them. We don't know their age. We don't, there's a lot of things we don't know about, and they're kind of invisible as far as the demographics to us, so.
I was just wondering, because I know there are a lot of youth that come from families that don't have vehicles that gets them to and from school. And I would just kind of wonder if the youth are being able to take advantage of the buses so they can get around town and help them.
Yeah, we implemented, two years ago, we implemented that high school students could ride free with an ID. We did that as a response to the school, who had been funding us at close to over a quarter of a million dollars a year, had decided to not fund us anymore. They were buying passes, and they were providing those passes to the students. So we kind of stepped in, knowing that there was a void there, and the students were still going to have a hard time getting to school, and we put into place this ride on an ID. That's one of those things that we're looking at as part of our budgetary process. That's a cost to us to provide that service, provide it for free to students. Not similar to Washburn. Washburn is actually providing us money to operate service or to, for their students to ride for free. So it's a little bit different than what 501 is doing. So we still have some conversations to have with 501. We hope that that will play out to all of our advantages. But one thing for sure, we have to take care of the kids and make sure that they're getting where they need to go. And that's on our radar screen for sure.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Yes, the kids do get to ride free to school. And also, in the summertime, they get to ride free. So that helps them to get to and from work. And so they've done that for several years. And my way to work, kids and people that work with the kids, we appreciate that because that gives them opportunity to make sure that they're on time and they get there. My question is on the MOD. I think it's great. I love it. The only problem I have with the MOD, that I still have with the MOD, is it stops throughout I-70, I-70 and Golden. On the other side of that is my low to modern income people that would very well benefit from that. I've even told people, just go to 13th and Golden and call them and tell them your address is 13th and Golden and pick you up and drop you off. There would be so many riders from the Pine Ridge, Paradise Plaza, Dr. Yarbar's place, that's all right in there. When are we going to just move that line just a little bit over?
Well, I mean, that's going to be looked at as we evaluate the system. But I mean, quite honestly, I mean, we don't know whether we're going to have to limit the system or whether we're going to have to terminate the system or what. I mean, yes, it's a great system, but it's become a premium service, and it's basically being subsidized and not being, by the Metro that, you know, we might have to be looking at either to keep the MOD going, are we going to have to raise the rates on it more like a premium Uber service or something like that, or things like that? So I mean, you know, as the way it stands right now, there would definitely be no expansion of it until we figure out how to make it economically feasible to provide this or continue to provide that service.
I think my low to modern income people in Echo Ridge that are able to utilize that would not mind paying more. There's so many emails that I receive from residents that say, I can't go shop at the store because by the time I catch this bus to catch this bus, my groceries have already melted. And so they're limited on what they can do. So I don't think they would have a problem with that. And I will continue, from this seat, to advocate for those on the other side of I-70. And I tell you what, I even went to 1300 and Golden and tried it and rode over there. And it's just right across. Now, my house is further, but it's just right, right across. Even if we were to have a stop, something, anything, but those people deserve that as well. I don't think they'd have a problem with that because there's a food desert in that area. There's a lot of single parents, a lot of elderly right there. And they would very much, very much welcome that. And I think at a little higher cost. So I hope you will take that back. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of thoughts for you. One, with the snow, I think it took everybody by surprise. The city, but people stepped forward. And I want to encourage you to network with the city folks as well as the downtown Topeka folks. It was way more than people could handle, but what I saw was, I got calls from people who said, you know, our, this is big companies with big trucks. You know, the city needed plows, and they said, you know, we used to all just pile in and help whenever there was a big snow. We haven't had one in a long time, and I guess the staff there didn't know we would come. You know, it doesn't just have to be that contract that the city had long-term. And as far as I know, those connections did get made affirmatively by both the city getting alerted and by those company owners reaching out. Downtown Topeka Inc. was overwhelmed and, of course, was very, you know, concerned about their sidewalks. Ended up making a contact with a company called Curve Appeal that does landscaping and windows, I think, that is now a major partner with them when they need the sidewalks done. And also, I just, and I've talked about it here at council, saw so many people on social media saying, I'm out here in my truck. I'd be happy to help. Anybody need anything? And maybe we, as government, don't think about just saying, sign us up, or even getting a group of folks who would be willing, you know, once they plowed whatever driveways they promised people they'd do and so on, got themselves out. But it was really amazing to me how many people offered to help. And I would encourage you to look at all levels to find people that are on standby for you. Also, a suggestion for the long-range planning, and I've suggested this to MTAA a long time ago, or TMTA, as well as the downtown folks. But as we get closer to getting the parking garages all done and inaugurating meters back in downtown, I very much hope that you all will co-promote with the city and establish satellite parking lots where people can leave their cars and ride the bus to work and otherwise downtown. I think that time is coming, so connecting, I highly encourage.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I kind of want to echo what Councilwoman Ortiz said. I think the MOD is a great program. It's, I'm in the heart of the MOD bubble, so I know there's plenty of people on my street that use it. And if there's any way, could you guys send us, I don't know if you keep the stats of where the pickups and drop-offs are, kind of what, maybe send us a heat map or something like that of the hotspots in the bubble? And then, just like Councilwoman said, I am all for raising rates before shutting it down. And try to figure out other alternatives before it gets shut down because I think a lot of people depend on it, use it for various things. And it's still a heck of a lot cheaper than the rideshare programs out there. So I think people would still go for an increase just to try to make it a feasible program.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you for the presentation, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item four, consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
All right, on the consent agenda, we have a resolution introduced by Councilmember Marcus Miller granting Sigma Phi Epsilon Fraternity Kansas Delta Chapter an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 9.45.150 concerning noise prohibitions. And then we also have, B is an approval of professional service contracts between the city and Watkins Calara Law Firm to represent the city in a civil lawsuit matter. C are the minutes of the regular meeting of March 18, 2025.
Mayor.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz.
Mayor. Mayor.
Oh, couldn't see you. Sorry. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, we'll get this fixed eventually.
Yes, thank you. I'm requesting that consent agenda item four, B, professional services contract, be removed and voted on separately. And I was told there doesn't not have to be a vote for that. And in addition to that, I have a question and a comment. Whenever you tell me, I can.
Okay, so on the consent agenda, it would include item A, C, and D. Is there a need for a second to remove that from the consent agenda to move it to action items?
Yes, it would.
That's whatever. Okay. So is there a second to Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala's motion?
Second.
Point of order, Mayor, point of order.
Okay, point of order, Councilman Duncan.
That's not required. We can move anything off the consent agenda to an action item at the request of any councilperson without a vote.
Okay, thank you.
I know, because that's what legal tells me every time, and I do, I did listen.
Okay. So our vote on the consent agenda, again, items A, C, and D. And you'd moved to approve those, Councilwoman Ortiz? Is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Councilman Banks. He'll take a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hopeur.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
And Pell.
Yes.
We have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay, by that action, have we moved this item to action items this evening? Or put it at the end of the action items that we already have? Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And again, I'm not sure how my audio sounds, but it's pretty rough on this. And thanks to Dan and company for working on it. But a couple of things, I say this respectfully, but whoever taking the city attorney's place, we just need to make sure we know what the rules are because people like me don't always know what the rules are. So I wanted to ask specifically about this item B for this contract. Can you, for transparency, can you tell me whether this is for the lawsuit involving the Taylor Lowery and Topeka versus Topeka Police Department or whoever is in the case?
Yes, it is, and we have. Yes, it is, and we have the litigation, chief of litigation here, if you have any specific questions that he may be able to answer. So it is in response to that.
Okay, so thank you for that. The reason I'm not voting for this is that this is what I feel, and as I've talked to constituents in the districts, along with advocates.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, we've moved this now to the action items. So that's where we can discuss this and whether you will or will not vote.
I can't understand what you're saying.
We've moved it at your request to the action items. So we will discuss it under action items after the other items that we already have on the agenda.
I, G.
Okay.
It'll be G.
So, because you're really hard to hear, but I think what you said is it's going to move to the action items.
Yes.
It's going to move down.
Yes.
And so I would just say then that if I cannot make out what's being said, because I have my captions on, if I would just be allowed to speak at that time?
Yes, ma'am.
When that time comes up, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Can we take just a few minutes to get your monitor fixed? It is dark. His monitor is dark. And.
Well, the volume is good.
But I'm talking about your monitor.
Mine is fine.
Can you check his monitor? I thought you said it was dark. Okay.
No, I didn't. You did. Forget about that. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item five, action items. Prior to, this will require a public hearing, but prior to that public hearing, I would like the clerk to read what this is, and then we will have a presentation from staff. Madam Clerk.
Okay, A is a public hearing to consider the establishment of the Union at Tower District Reinvestment Housing Incentive District and adoption of the plan. It is also a development agreement for the Union Tower District Subdivision RHID between the City of Topeka and Union at Tower District LP and Indiana Limited Partnership. And it is also an ordinance introduced by city manager Dr. Robert M. Perez establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district for Union Tower, Union at Tower District, and adopting a plan for the development of housing and public facilities in the RHID.
Okay, so Dr. Perez?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Braxton Koppely, Deputy City Manager, Marianne Freeman, Director of Planning and Development will lead us to this item. I'm also checking to see if we have an electronic copy that we can send to the council members here shortly.
The, the staff copy of this was posted to the agenda, but I can go ahead and download that and email it to them since I just sent the ones who weren't here the copy of the presentation that the developers' council is going to give.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, so tonight we're going to be presenting an overview of Union Development Holdings LLC's requests for Union at Tower RHID District. We'll also be presenting the RHID Review Committee recommended RHID reimbursement for the project. Okay, so to provide a little bit of background and just a reminder, since it's been a little bit of time since we've discussed this, Union at Tower District is proposing 250 additional units in downtown Topeka. These will be apartments. It's a proposed mix of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. So the development will be income-qualified, which means that there will be a 10% discount to fair market rents or 30%, 50%, and 60% AMI limits that will be set for the project. So this map provides an overview of the area which the project will take place, so between 11th and 12th, Quincy and Monroe. There are two sites, A and B are on project site one, and then building C will be on a secondary site. All right, so this presentation and the one that you'll receive later just highlight some of the high-level design details that the developer, the Annex Group, was able to provide. All right, so jumping in a little bit more into the RHID request, the project applicant submitted their RHID housing development plan with an outline of $7.6 million requested in RHID applicable reimbursements. This covered things like the cost of land acquisition, infrastructure, a portion of the construction, and then soft cost as well. The estimated total cost of the project is around $58 million. Important to note that this project has also received a 2024 4% Lytec Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Award from KHRC, Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, as well as an IRB for sales tax exemption on construction materials and supplies from Shawnee County. All right, so as is our process, once we received the housing development plan, engaged with our financial advisor to put together a financial analysis. At that point in time, we came together and we held our first RHID Review Committee meeting, that happened in early January. The review committee came together and reviewed the analysis and the initial findings. The findings of the initial analysis showed that the project warranted a maximum of $355,000 in RHID reimbursement. As you can imagine, this raised a few questions to understand why, what we were calculating was far below the $7.6 million that was initially requested. The committee then provided direction to Columbia Capital to go back to the drawing board and try to make sure that we weren't missing any marks. Some of the things that we cited that would be important is to make sure that we had the Lytec application sources and uses that were provided to KHRC for the 4% application, just making sure that everybody had the same numbers, we were all working off the same materials. Also, the operating pro forma, and then just some clarity on some details of land acquisition versus land lease. So after that review on March 7th, the review committee reconvened again to talk about the updated findings of the analysis. After that, additional consideration was given to the list of items that, some of these we've discussed, but the vacancy rate that was utilized, that can sometimes impact the numbers, the developer fee and their deal equity, details of the land acquisition versus a land lease, an appropriate use of an appropriate capitalization rate, and then IRR calculated off of a 10-year analysis. So the findings of the updated analysis provided by Columbia Capital showed that upon clarification of some of these additional details, that the project warranted a maximum of $900,000 in RHID reimbursement. So the analysis projects an 8% market rate of return with this level of RHID reimbursement. Okay, so that brings us to where, where we are coming at today with our, from our final meeting with the RHID Review Committee. So where we stand is a requested $7.6 million, our initial findings, the revised version of those findings equalling the $900,000, and then a recommendation from the review committee as a supported compromise, understanding the importance of affordable housing and the impact this would have to the downtown market. That compromise is a $4.8 million RHID incentive equalling a 7.76 market rate of return using an 8.5% cap rate.
Go back, go back a little. And I just want to make a couple of things clear. The 7.6 request is the net present value, so really the gross amount is closer to $15 million. The 4.8 million that the committee recommended is a gross amount, so there is a substantial delta between, between the 4.8 million and 15 million. So I just want to make sure that, because I know developers' council is going to distress that, I want to make sure that we are clearly stating that the 7.6 million is net present value. If you gross that up, that's closer to 15 million, and the 4.8 million that was recommended by the council is a gross amount.
All right, and then this, this slide just simply provides an overview of the process, where we started out with the creation of a district and where we're at now after conversations with the review committee and then coming before you with our findings and the recommendations of the committee. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Deputy Mayor.
Just curious, looking at these maps, there is an existing house there. Will that stay as is, or are they buying that house also? Because I bought this one on, this one right here, this map here, outlined, it kind of takes the house out of the outline, so.
We'll defer to the developer to answer that question.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's hard to see me. I have two questions. One, with, you said the price, the price tag for the project was about $58 million. Is there any way that we can get a guesstimate on with the IRB, with the RHID? If all of this came through, how much incentives this developer would be getting, just to ballpark?
So we're looking up the amount of the state and federal tax credits, it was in their sources and uses, but the, the RHID, the gross amount would be over the, over the 25-year life is going to be approximately 15 million just for that. And then federal Lytec, about 27.7 million, state Lytec, 19.3 million, and honestly don't remember what the estimated value of the tax, point-of-purchase retail tax exemption under the IRB granted by the county.
Okay, so basically, so basically with all of those incentives, that would be covering the cost of the project that's been given to you all?
So obviously, there are a lot of incentives in the project, which is why the, in doing the analysis, why the committee has made its recommendation to limit the amount of the RHID so that we are not over-incentivizing the project. But obviously, there is a, there's a difference of opinion between what, what our position is and our recommendation versus what the developer believes their financial need is in terms of the incentives necessary to make this project go.
And I have another question. With this big difference of even after the new calculation, which came about the RHID rate on our side at about $955,000 and them still staying stuck on the 7.6, which exceeds that, now you're saying that actually ends up being 15 million gross and then 4.6 compromise that we have is actually 4.6 million gross. Is that usual for developers? If I'm going to use the verbage, you know, nobody else has, to, to try to take advantage of a situation to this extent, is that common in other affordable housing initiatives? You know, was there any comparing, comparing and contrasting as to what is happening in other cities that have the same needs as we do?
That's a, that's a great question. Trying to navigate and have a fair answer, which is, I believe developers, as, as a rule, are going to ask for what they, what they can get to make their project profitable for them.
And, and I understand what you're saying, and thank you for the even-handedness. I guess I'm not being as even-handed, because if you look at 955,000, their set point is 7.6, we're going down to 4.6 or 7, which is still an extraordinary, extraordinarily high amount in comparison to what the city's own computations were. It seems to me that we may be, as in other situations, setting ourselves up for being taken advantage of in this way, unless this is the way it always goes down in other municipalities, then it would be interesting to hear that. And so, you know, for me not to be off the mark in this and to understand that this is the way that it rolls, but I'm not hearing that. So, you know, hopefully, there's going to be some other discussion because I'm concerned about supporting this, even though I know that we need affordable housing, I'm just concerned at what that votes for the future with other developers. Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions? Braxton, Marianne? Okay. Thank you for the presentation, Braxton and Marianne. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the matter?
Besides the applicant, Mayor, we're just making sure if there's others.
Okay. I thought you were heading for the podium.
Yeah, when you say, I will, for sure.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the matter? Mr. Mayor?
Just upon hearing this and the questions that were asked, I think it would be a wonderful idea. I know this development has, these developers have developed a similar unit in Lawrence, and just kind of reaching out and seeing if this, in fact, was some similar incentives that were provided. How has that development been working out in Lawrence? Is it truly affordable? Is it working for the city? We have some, a development very close by that we could be asking those questions and kind of getting at least an, an idea if that would be relevant here. So I hope that we can reach out and find out more. Thanks.
Thank you. And for the third time, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. And now, is there a presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Yep, I got it. That's great. Mayor, good evening, council. My name is Kurt Peterson with Pulsonelli, 948th Street, Kansas City, Missouri. It's been a real joy to work on a number of projects these last couple of years in Topeka. I hope there are many more. I know there are a number in the pipeline. I hope staff from Amanda and Braxton, Rannan, will say that there's always a lot of exuberance here and true excitement for Topeka. I think we're really at a, I don't know, it feels like an inflection point where there's just a lot of energy going on, especially, you know, in the downtown area. So it's a privilege to be before you tonight. We're here on one project tonight, and so we'll focus on that now. The developer is the Annex Group, as you heard Rannan and Braxton introduce, they're based out of Indianapolis. With me is Joyce Skidmore, here in the front row, who's the Director of Development. I have a slide in your packet that just gives you a little bit of a sense for who the Annex Group is. They're an extremely accomplished group with lots of experience and really an impeccable track record in this residential community space. Their mission, as is shown on the screen, is to create a positive impact with people who live, work, and are involved in their communities, and they take that very seriously in everything they do. In just a few minutes, I'm going to tell you a bit about a nonprofit group that's their partner that they formed that comes alongside their residents in every one of their communities to make sure that they have the best experience possible. But before that, let's get to the site here in Topeka. So I've been working with Joy and her team for about a year on this project to get to this moment tonight, to bring quality, affordable housing to this site. With all the financing in place and ready to close, really, tonight is truly, truly our last hurdle. This is it. The project goes forward or it doesn't, and it goes forward fast with closing in approximately 10 days. So the project site, which you already saw on the screen, is right there at 11th and Quincy. It is in the condition, as you can see here today. I know that you, you know, this is an extremely underutilized site, especially for being so close to the Capitol and to downtown, and it's been that way for a very, I've talked to a number of you, for a very, very long time. It pays, it generates very little property tax, less than $10,000 a year. Geographically speaking, it has immense potential. We're thrilled to have the opportunity now, since we've reached an agreement with the property owner who's here, to be able to move forward, hopefully, with this approval tonight with the project on this site. So this is an, this is an overall view that just shows you kind of greenscape, hardscape building. Building is in white asphalt, and then you have all the green space. You'll see across the three buildings, there's 250 living units. The two buildings on the west side of Quincy are four-story buildings, and then the building you see on the east side of Quincy is a three-story building. Rannan gave you a glimpse, again, of some of these photos, but again, just kind of giving you a, a real physical sense what would go on this site. This is high-quality building materials, this is brick that is masonry and hardy, so the best materials you can use. There are one, two, and three-bedroom options across these buildings, and every single unit has either a balcony or has a patio, depending on if it's first story or upper stories. This gives you another view, these are the elevations, two vantage points. And then I wanted to spend just a second showing you what the amenities look like. Clearly, these buildings aren't there, so we can't look in these buildings, but we can look at the other communities that are just like this, that this developer's built, the Annex Group has delivered. And I think what you'll find is there's tons of amenities, and I'm not going to name everything, but to give you a sense, you know, if there's going to be a public-private partnership, what is the city buying, if you know what I mean? You know, what are you getting? A community room, onsite leasing and management, a fitness area, a business and computer center, a playground, a dog park, outdoor lawn and open space, little, other little things, again, not mentioning them all, but a clubhouse with free internet for all residents. And then all units, which is not, is not as common as you might imagine, all units have washers and dryers. So this is a very, very high-quality community that the Annex Group wants to bring to this site. Now, I said I would spend just a minute, and I'm going to, on their nonprofit program. Personally, I get to be involved, and this is my job, right? I get to be involved in amazing projects all over the region. I have not seen this room many times with people building communities, residential communities like this. The Annex Group, several years ago, saw the need and seeks to fill it. This is called the Impact Housing Corp. It's a nonprofit that they formed that comes alongside in their communities and provides services to their residents. So I'm not going to read the, is that called necroistic? What's that called, acronym? You know what I mean. But read each letter, read across, and you get a real sense for what it's about, but I'm not going to read that to you, but I want to give you examples of what they do. They have nutrition programs, they have community garden programs, they have financial wellness, they have healthy living programs, they have youth programs, and they have other types of resident engagement to bring community together. They're doing this, and they will do this here in Topeka if they can move forward with this project. So overall, if you're trying to get a sense for what impact... So overall, if you're trying to get a sense for what Impact Housing Corp, the nonprofit, is all about, it's about community impact, as you can see on the slide and read a little bit more about it there. Very unusual, but exciting, in my opinion. So hopefully, again, without dwelling on it too much, you can really get a sense, this is nothing short of a high-quality community. The price tag, as you said, is just below $60 million, and this is equal to, as I get to do lots of what we call market rate, right, that doesn't have low-income housing tax credits, market rate projects, and if you look at the costs, $60 million divided by 250 units, I would challenge you to go look, this is at or above most market rate housing and what's spent. So last time, I'm going to say it, this is high-quality housing. Now, and yet, because this is, you flipped the coin over, the rents are fixed. That's what low-income housing does. It provides affordable housing. So this affordable community will have a current estimated average rent, remember, we have different unit sizes, so we could go through all that, but average rent is $788 per unit, per month. So I'm not going to go deep into this, but it's really important, Rannan touched on it, that what we do is we agree with KHRC, our overall housing group in the state, that ushers out and allocates tax credits for projects they think are worthy of them. We said we will commit to have all of our units capped on rent. Some will be 60% of the area median income, right? Something here. Some will be 50%, and some will be 30%. And for those of you, some of you I know have experienced, a lot of experience with housing like this, when you get down to 30%, 16, 50% is hard enough. 30%, most developers try to, just being honest, stay away from. You're capping rent at 30% of the area median income. This developer took that on because they think there's a need. So 30%, 50%, and 60%. And one thing I wanted to note, again, some of you know this, but it's not just that you get capped. There's a market study that we're basing this on, all our financing is based on, there's a few of those caps we don't even think will be met, if you know what I mean. When people show up and what they can pay, it'll be even less than that. Affordable housing, that's super-high quality. Now, how do we make that happen? It starts with land use approvals. I'm happy to tell you, you've already acted on this. This project is shovel-ready. It is ready to go. All the land use approvals are done. We just need financing. When you think of financing for this project, how does this project get up and go? It needs three pieces of financing, main pieces. One, it needs an allocation of both federal and state low-income housing tax credits. That's not easy to come by, and in fact, not being critical, just observing, just not too far away from here, we'll find out in the next few days. The program that's been so competitive to attract this developer from out of state with $60 million is going to change. I'll leave it at that. We can talk afterwards. It's going to change no matter what in the next few days, because the legislature is going to do something different. This is grandfathered. We have an opportunity here. This is grandfathered if this moves forward. So low-income housing tax credits, check. Totally done. Have the allocation, ready to go. The second of three is industrial revenue bonds from the county, as Rannan and Braxton mentioned, and that's so that we can get sales tax exemption. And the question on how much, there's a good rule of thumb, you can figure out how much a sales tax exemption is worth. If you generally take, it's between 3% and 4% of the construction cost. Another way to do it is take 40% of the cost, because it's only on the materials, 40% of the cost times the relevant tax rate, and you can get down to it. So in this case, about $1 million and a half, and that's super-helpful, because that's cost savings right off the top, and we're really thankful, check. The county was totally on board with this project and put that in place. So where are we? We're the last one, and that's what we're going to spend our time talking about. That's the decision on your plate tonight. That's RHID. So about a year and a half ago, you know, the legislature did something really helpful. They amended the RHID statute, and what it did was it made it just more useful, more, it made it broader, and they gave one city in the state of Kansas priority treatment. It was the city of Topeka, and we can unpack what that means, but they did, and it was amazing. It made a project like this possible. And it was made totally for quality, affordable housing, the very thing we're after here with this project. Now, deep down inside, because you all have worked, even I've worked with you, on tax increment financing, like on the Boulevard, RHID is tax increment financing. It's redirecting property taxes, right? We just get to do it a little bit longer, if you choose, and there's a couple other bells and whistles, but it's very helpful. So it's super-important to slow down as you make your decision about this proposal tonight to think about what this is, and this is why I brought up TIF. Sometimes we come in with tax increment financing, and we have a bunch of restaurants, right, and retailers and things like that, and all those people pay taxes, and a portion of those taxes come back around and reimburse the developer for putting in infrastructure or what have you, right? Making Boulevard improvements, things like that. In this case, that's not, that's not what happens. This is effectively a property tax abatement. Well, what do I mean? I say that, we don't have restaurants. We don't have other retailers. We have an apartment project that will be beautiful and expensive and nice, that the Anix Group will own for 30 years, and when they pay taxes, some of them will come back. So what does that mean? If I pin $10 in taxes and I get $8.50 back, effectively, I got my taxes abated, right? That is everything to the Anix Group. That's what this is all about. It's a tax abatement requested for 25 years. So with that in your mind, I wanted to note, what I just noted again, but put some emphasis on it, that there's a commitment here to own this project for 30 years. That's the pro forma mindset. That's the financial mindset, and it's extremely important to focus on, because that's what investor, the loan, everything is about. What is this value proposition? Every time you're asked to vote on something like this, members of the public, rightly so, get to come and comment and ask questions, those watching online, and they want to know, are my councilman members, is my mayor, thinking about the big picture? Is this a net benefit for me as a taxpayer? Is that fair? Everybody should and probably is asking that. So here's the value proposition from our perspective for you. On the city's part, the city, if the request was granted, would allow a 25-year property tax abatement, effectively, for this project, and it would be about an 85% abatement. We can get in the weeds if anybody has questions, but the statute says certain things are called out for the school district and the, a little bit of the state mill levy, so it ends up being about an 85% abatement. So the request on the table is, the city would put in an 85% property tax abatement for this project. Well, what would, what would the developer do? The developer would promise, this year, immediately, this spring, to start on and deliver, to build 250 quality homes, everything I just showed you in terms of assuring its quality, at affordable prices, extremely affordable, for decades, and they'll be there owning it for 30 years. So a key issue to understand in that, though, is that we could sit there, if we put on the screen a spreadsheet, right, or a table, and we could say, well, how much in taxes do you plan to save 85% abatement, right, in year one? And we could do it in year two, in year three, and we could add up a number, right? And that's what we typically do. Developers usually come in and say, council member, I need 5.5 million for these things, right? That's what we normally do, and we talk about the return to the developer and all of that. This developer doesn't care. This developer needs and is asking respectfully for a tax abatement through RHID for 25 years of 85%. The number? When you think about it, think it in your mind again of that table, right? How much property tax payment are you going to save? $10, save $10? Add it up. Do all of us know what this project is going to be put on the books for by the county appraiser? I know the answer. The answer is, we don't know. We have a range, because this is what we all do for a living. We do not know. There's a big range. We really don't know. So what that abatement, if you added up the savings every year from property taxes under this, we don't really know. Again, we have a range, but I'm going to say it one more time, not again after this. The developer, an investor, and the lender don't care. They don't care about a number. They just know that this project works when property taxes are abated for 25 years at 85%. So it's not about, councilman, I need 11 million, I need 5 million. We'll ultimately state it that way, because we have to have a development agreement. It's about a tax abatement. So the city's financial advisor stated, and I'm not going to go deep into this, because Braxton, Rand did a really good job on this, but this is the nut of the issue for you to decide tonight, stated that when we ask for this 85% tax abatement for 25 years, that it provides too much, too high of a return to the developer. The developer would make too much money. And thus came back ultimately saying, I think maybe you should offer $900,000. Just to translate for you, because this is about a tax abatement, that'd be a little less than a two-year tax abatement for this project. That's what $900,000 would be, in our estimation. Now, you're probably wondering, how could the financial advisor's conclusion be that different? I'm an adventurer, saying I mean this. I've done this for 20 years, and I love what I do. I've never seen something this far apart, effectively a $15.8 million, that is the 25, estimated 25-year tax abatement, and a financial advisor coming back at $900,000. I literally have never seen it. I said, Joy, you ever seen this before? Never seen it in any state, in any city before. Anix Group was entirely confused when I came back and delivered this news. It's absolutely essential, this request, and yet does not provide above-market returns. Look at every one of you in the eyes. So many financial people involved, absolutely doesn't. And so we thought, this just doesn't add up. So we said, can we have a copy of the financial advisor's modeling, right? That's what we do. We have spreadsheets, and we said, can we just look at, there's some, there's some disconnect. We were perplexed that we weren't able to see it, but it's okay, that we're given it, but we're given the assumptions in the model. So my associate, me, and the CFO for Anix Group, built a model to be like the financial advisors, right? Because we knew his conclusions, and we knew his assumptions, and we did it. Guess what we found out? There was one big disconnect. The financial advisor assumes, in the return model, that this project will be sold right after the 10th year, and they determine what their price will be based on a cap rate. You know how financially they do that. Well, if you do that and you assume it'll be sold, that's a totally different calculus than somebody that is before you tonight, saying we're going to own it for 30 years, can't sell it, won't sell it, it's impossible, and we brought that up. And the answer was, we have a good relationship with the financial advisor staff, of course. We just said, this doesn't make sense to us. We can't sell it. How can you say that? And the answer was, well, this is how we always do it. We have to have apples to apples from project to project, so we always show a sale in the 10th year. We, you know, we can't have a bad precedent, and I'm extremely sympathetic to precedent, having the privilege to work for cities every, every night of the week. And so I said, can I offer a different way of looking at it? Any low-income housing tax credit project that would come before this body, that can't be sold for 30 years, right? Let's not show a sale in the 10th year that shows the model blowing up, right, and a huge return to the developer, because it's impossible. Let's treat that as a separate precedent. So any, any, any project like that, that comes in, a like project, we'll treat like that, and everything else we do, on the Boulevard or whatever, we'll treat with a 10th-year sale. And that, you know, that was our position, and you're seeing tonight that that was rejected as a way of looking at it, but I want everybody to please, respectfully, think hard about that, because we can't, we're not selling it. And so showing that shows, really, something that's an inaccurate conclusion in terms of return. It's impossible. So, and I will say, before moving on from that, the Anix Group, who again, does this in states all over, doesn't even have a sale on their model. Literally, if you looked at their big, complicated, there's not even a place for a sale, because that's not even part of the pro forma. So when you take out the 10th-year sale on this model that we recreated for the financial advisor, it puts the returns right down in the reasonable range that's acceptable to the city. So let's go back to the committee's recommendation. Now, the committee recommended a total of 4.8 million. Braxton, thank you so much for clarifying. It's a nuanced financial issue, but it's dead on. That's a gross number, so that actually means it's less than that. 4.8 million would be about, based on our estimate of what taxes, would be about nine years of abatement, if we're kind of tracking. Financial advisors, about two years of abatement. The committee's suggestion, recommendation would be about nine years of abatement, far, right, a third, far from the 25-years abatement that we've been counting on in our modeling. But I will say this, the committee was doing, in my view, I didn't sit there, I don't, I'm, I think the committee was doing the best that it could, Mayor. I say that because there was a financial advisor that says, this is the way we're going to look at it. We're going to show a 10th-year sale, and when you did that, and the committee then played with the cap rate, they did the best they could, and they said, we can justify $4.8 million. So what does all this mean? Applying a market rate analysis to this project, selling it in 10 years, that is, will kill this project, and I'm pausing, because I mean it, it's not, it will kill this project. If we treat this like a market rate project, instead of a light tech project, it will not move forward, because you will not be able to support the kind of abatement that's being requested. But taking an accurate approach, by removing the sale of this project in the 10th year, and showing the actual economics and returns that are reasonable under these facts, it will show that it's justified. So what is that request? To be super-clear, as you deliberate, very, very clear about the request from the developer for this project to move forward. 25 years abatement, 85%. And what is that number? Again, professional staff said it, that adds up, based on our estimates of what taxes could be, about $15.8 million over 25 years. And then, when you discount that, which every single project we've ever done in every city, we always do, we take, oh, a number where you receive money over time, and we discount it back, right? Because getting a dollar a year for 25 years is not the same as getting $25 today, right? So you discount it back using an interest rate, and that's where you get the $7.6 million. Well, why do you do that? Because that's how you show a sources and uses. If you have a project cost of 60 million, true, right, 59 million, 60 million, and you need to understand what today's value of the 25-year abatement is, right, which is the 7.6 million, to match it up with today's cost, or it doesn't make sense. What is that percentage? We oftentimes look at that. What is the incentives request? There's a question about this. The incentives request as a percentage of the overall budget, and it's approximately that 7.6 million, which is net, remember, that's plus interest, so it's gross, $15.8 million, is 12.6%. So there was a couple council members that had the opportunity to catch a conversation, and certainly staff heard this, so I wanted to add this detail, because I want everybody to hear the same thing. 25 years of abatement at 85%. We said, very transparently, we can actually do this deal. Our line is that 20 years of abatement. You're like, why, developers don't talk like that. If you're asking for 25 years, why are you telling me you would do 20 years? Because the way we explained it is, which, by the way, if you translate the 20 years, 20 years is just about $12 million gross, $6.6 million discounted, right, which is about 11% of the overall budget. Why am I saying that? Because we truly believe, when you get to about year 15, you're always reinvesting in a property like this, and that's always what Anix Group does. They're always putting more money in, keeping it up. Having that glide path, to have that nice NOI, that is the property tax abatement, all the way to year 25, has proven to be, that is the ideal way to do this. That is the way to keep this asset in the best condition for long-term. If this body says, I'd rather see 20 years, which is $12 million, 6.6, you know, MPV, that'll get this project done. We would still ask for the 20 years. We think it's the best for the project long-term.
Sir, are you about finished with your?
I was. I was wrapping up right now, Mayor, if that's okay with you. So, literally, the very end. So with this request, 250 quality homes in this location at affordable prices, bringing the Impact Nonprofit Services, commitment to being in this community for at least the next 30 years, and taking a truly, I would use this word, blighted sight in its current condition, paying very little taxes, that would put new residents, vibrancy, you know, life at 11th and Quincy, right near, you know, kind of a walkable downtown area. That is our vision, and Mayor and Council tonight, with this request that's been made, if we receive approval tonight, we will move forward immediately. Like I said, closing is in 10 days. They have their own general contractor, and we're moving. I would, I know there's a lot here, and I appreciate the time all of you gave me to go through that. This is it, right? The project goes, or it doesn't after a year. Thank you for giving us all that time to get into the details, and thank you to staff, and we'd love to answer your questions now.
Any questions from the body? I want to make sure.
Sir.
Thank you for the information and the presentation. In your professional opinion, is there any way this project could go off-grid?
The last part, I just didn't hear the last part.
Is there any way this project could go off-grid, maybe not work out?
Oh, you don't mean electricity. You mean figuratively?
Yes.
Absolutely. It, this is 100%. I wish, if you were on, council member, our closing calls, we have about 30 people, not exaggerating. Every week, as we get close to the closing, we had our last call today, and everybody said, here it is, you're going tonight, we're either on or we're off. This project lives or dies by getting an RHID approved. 100%, 1,000% true.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Vadivjakala.
Thank you, Mayor. The gentleman at the podium, do you always do your negotiating at a city council meeting for the final number?
This is one of the first times in my 20-year career that this circumstance has ever happened. I was trying, councilwoman, to explain that earlier, probably didn't do a good job. This is highly unusual and never where we want to be. But at the end of the day, when there's a recommendation that is based on, in good faith, but based on, you heard, facts that are not applicable here, we have no choice. It's either walk away from the project or give it a shot. So thank you for listening tonight.
So I know that there are a number of votes besides mine. It's a little bit off-putting to hear this kind of presentation when staff's been working so hard and come in as the negotiator, upping from 4.6 to 6.6, going down from 7.6 to your 6.6, and then it's like, come on, let's do it, hurry up, make this decision. That is a little bit off-putting and slightly insulting, but thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, did you have something?
Follow-up on the question I asked earlier. There is that one house that is on the property. What is the plan with that existing house?
So at the very, very beginning, we approached that, and the we is the global we, the Anix Group, approached the owner and asked if we could purchase. And the answer was no. So we did everything possible and I hesitate to speak for the owner of our, the seller that's in the room. I think maybe he approached that person also and they weren't willing to sell. So we just worked around it.
Councilwoman Ortiz, then Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking, other than the parking lots, you don't have any garages, carports or anything?
I want to put it back up there. Yeah, there's, yeah, there's no carports on this project. Not on this project, councilwoman.
Can you tell me why? Did you run out of space? Or, I mean, I think, you know, if I was looking for some type of apartment, I'd be looking for shelter or what about outside storage or do you have anything like that, off the patio storage?
We do not have any here, but it's kind of a trade-off in every, like you said, sometimes it's site constraints, other times it's just, I mean, where do you want to spend your $60 million? So in this case, and we chose to use it more on amenities and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
I've sat in on these because this is in my district, so we get invited when it's in your district. But you said some things today that confused me because this RHID is still new to me.
Sure.
Are you asking for a percent per year for a fixed number of years that could then end up being a different amount of money depending on the appraisal? Or are we talking about a fixed cap?
It's a great, it's a really great question. So thank you for giving the opportunity to slow down and focus on it. Building blocks, from our perspective, tax abatement, right? That is literally how the performers bill. It's all about each year, making sure that your NOI doesn't dip because there's this huge tax load. That's the building block. Second point is 25 years and then my comment about 20 years. So let's just keep saying 25 years. 25 years. You and I don't know. So forget a number. If we could just, in a way, say, we have an 85%, tax abatement for, 85% tax abatement for 25 years, we would stop. But the way that the RHID program is, you still technically match up with cost, if you know what I mean, councilwoman. So that's why we have to start talking about a cap. So the way we would propose it is, we would propose the number as the cap, but let's say taxes over 25 years, the abatement that is of the taxes, is only $11 million instead of 15.8. Then the amount that would come back of abatement would be $11 million. It means nothing. If we got to, and when we get to year 25, it cuts off no matter what. So, to us, it's an abatement, but we have to pick a number to be sure. If taxes were, and I don't think they would be, were higher than what we were saying. And we said, councilwoman, we would like an 85% abatement for 25 years. And we said the max number was 15.8, but the taxes, actually, by the time you got to year 22, there was 15.8 reimbursed, it would shut off. So there's, it's both is the answer. It's an abatement at heart, but it has a cap built into it.
But that way, if the taxes, if the appraisals and therefore the taxes did not go up
So if they're low, yep.
To that higher number, you would...
We'd get a small amount abated and it would go 25 years and be done at, you know, at a smaller number. We can only get abated what's...
So if that 11 million comparison that you made, I mean, is there a chance that you would only get 11 out of it? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, because when you think of out of it, it's our money. It's taxes we paid and just got back. It's an abatement. So whether it's a low amount of taxes or a high amount of taxes, we don't care, as long as 85% of it's coming back. We handed it over, we put it back in our pocket. So we don't care whether it's low or high, but you're stating a reality. You're exactly right. It could be low, the county appraiser could do it more like certain projects we talked about or other projects. We don't care. We don't care about the number. We care about the abatement. But because this is RHID, we have to talk about what is that number? But it does, it's our money, it's just handing it back and forth.
Well, on our end, we'd like to start collecting it at some point.
That's right, that's right. And definitely more than $10,000, right, a year. We're aligned in that.
Well, and that would leave us with only getting $10,000 a year for 20 years. So I'm just trying to sort out the, when I had my one-on-one, you mentioned that there'd been a set amount and then in another community that you did a development in, you got stung by whatever that cap was.
Right. Sometimes you have different tools where you stipulate a specific amount. This isn't that tool where we stipulate like a fixed, we call them payments and low tax. It's just not the same tool. IRBs do that, but then they only go 10 years. So that didn't provide the financing needed.
And I'll ask whoever, you know, so it's not possible for us to set a, because you have a dollar amount for your development, it's not possible for us to agree to a dollar cap on how much you would get back at whatever the pace was?
We can agree to both. We can agree to a dollar amount and we can agree to a year amount. That's what I'm saying, we're both, we're just trying to align the two because we know based on what taxes could be, if we say, for instance, I'm going to give an example I gave, if you fix it at 20 years, this will last for 20 years. It will cut off after 20 years. We know from our modeling that 85% of the possible taxes would total, it's just below this round number, $12 million. So we would say, please put a cap on us that when $12 million of abatement has happened, if it happens before 20 years, it shuts off. If it doesn't happen till 20 years, it shuts off at 20 years. But you would never get more than $12 million of abatement. So that's why there's a cap on the terms of years and a cap in terms of dollar amount of abatement.
Okay. I guess I'll double-check it with staff once.
For sure, please do.
See how that works. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess my question is simple, hopefully. I guess what I'm trying to figure out here is, and I know you had some one-on-ones with folks, you could have them and others who didn't, but to be honest, my knowledge, you didn't send anything to the council as a whole with your suggestions this evening to the changes. Some of us are hearing these specifics for the first time. So I guess my question to you is, are you telling us tonight that if we don't make those two adjustments, the dollar amount in the year, and we just approve what's in front of us this evening, this project will not happen?
What I'm saying, Councilman Duncan, without an approval of that level, that, I said 20 years or 25, I keep saying that for a reason. That's the level that our investor, our lender, everyone's counting on and we're going to be closing in 10 days. We can't close without this. So a delay here would delay that. That's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm never trying to put backs against the wall. I'm just being honest, we've been working with staff for, what, months and months and months? And we've had the chance to talk to, you know, in-district council members, et cetera, and, councilmember. And so, no, your back is not against the wall in terms of like, make a decision or we'll never see you again. But we do need this territory of type of abatement or the project won't happen. That's the reality.
And I hear you, but I mean, tonight I have a choice. I've either got to vote for something, vote for what's in front of me, make some sort of amendment before I vote what's in front of me, or take another week to digest all this, to talk to staff and get feedback. So what you're, so that's why I'm asking. If I vote for option one, which is what's on the table, you're telling me that's going to make things a little iffy. And you're telling me if I delay things by a week, that's going to make things a little iffy. So really, you're kind of shut up tonight and saying...
No, sorry, can I correct? I'm only interrupting to correct that second one.
I'm just trying to figure out my next step for this process here this evening.
Councilmember Duncan, that second option you mentioned is, if there was a delay for a week, it just means I need to go check, we have to make sure we can push closing. But no, I wasn't saying necessarily it blows up the project.
Okay. I'm just trying to let everyone know we have some options if we need them to try to get to where you need to get without us doing, either getting ahead of ourselves
Right.
Or making a decision that could be detrimental. So that's all I'm trying to figure out.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
Mayor? Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions for staff, if I could.
Yes.
For Brian Braxton, and maybe the city attorney or whoever's there tonight. So it's been stated that the model that staff relied on had the developer selling the project in 10 years. Is there something that we can either put in the agreement, RHID agreement, or some other mechanism that would make it so the RHID would expire if the property were sold prior to the expiration of the RHID? Does that make sense?
Yes, Councilman Dobler, there are two ways to protect the city. The first is to, we actually added the provision in there prohibiting the sale for 30 years. But then in addition to that, we could have a LORA, a land use restriction agreement on the property, also prohibiting sale, that would be of record, right? So yes, it would be possible to craft that.
So let me just ask some fairly simple questions to make sure I understand this. I mean, that property's been sitting there for 20, 25, 30 years in about the same condition. Property taxes are currently about $10,000. I think somebody mentioned that. If this project fails and that property sits for the next 20 years, let's say, the city will get basically 10,000 bucks a year, right?
Correct, sir.
Thank you. We have talked over and over about the need for housing, the need for affordable housing. Somebody's got to build it. I mean, the city's not building it. It comes down to a developer that has to come and build whatever the project is, whatever the funding mechanisms are. So as a city, what money, what general fund money is the city putting into this project?
None, sir. This would purely be the RHID.
Okay. So basically the TIF, the tax TIF, was mentioned earlier, the owners pay the tax and then that tax is refunded. Who takes a risk on this project? I mean, who puts the $50 million in upfront?
That would be the light tech investors and the bank and then whatever equity that the developer is having to put in to satisfy the bank, which I think the equity is deferred, deferred equity, deferred developer fee on that.
So it's fair to say the developer's taking the risk upfront. This is a pay-as-you-go, so they'll get money back, but it's down the road. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So here's, here's a proposal. We need the housing. We need affordable housing. I find it kind of interesting that we get a proposal for affordable housing downtown and I guess because it's a developer, that's a huge issue. I don't know. I don't really understand it. But we need housing downtown. This is 250 units of affordable housing. I don't think anybody disagrees with that or debates that. We can, you know, we can debate how long this should go on, what the ultimate level of tax rebate should be. I think at this point, we need to, we need to move ahead with this project. We need to see this kind of project downtown. I just can't stress that enough. I would make a motion or whatever, whatever format is at this point, number one, that we put some kind of clause in that you just discussed, Braxton, that if this developer, this owner sells the property before the expiration of the RHID, then it would automatically expire at that point. So they could not sell the property and somebody else continues to benefit from the RHID. Secondly, since it's already been offered, I would say, let's take this down to 20 years. If I understand right, that's about $6 million in present value.
Sure.
If that's not, if that's not the case, let me know, but I think that's about right.
6.6 million. Sorry to interrupt, 6.6 million in that present value, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I think that's a reasonable compromise. So, two things with this, and I'm having a really hard time hearing, there's a lot of extraneous noise over this connection, so I don't know if that's me or what. Anyways, so 20-year expiration date and then the clause about clawback if the property is sold before that 20 years expires. Thank you, Mayor.
So are you making that as a friendly amendment?
He made it as a motion.
Or a motion? To approve it under those two conditions? You're making a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor. A second.
Motion and a second. I just want to make sure that we get, everybody gets a chance to understand what we're voting on this evening to include Councilman Dobler's additions to what we have before us. Madam Clerk, do you have it ready for us to consider? I can see it for myself.
Yeah, I'm going to restate the motion.
A motion and a second. Still some consideration for discussion from Deputy Mayor.
All right, kind of piggybacking on what Councilman Dobler said there. A couple months ago, we were here discussing property over on 29th and Watermaker area and everyone sits there and says, no one wants to develop in a low-income neighborhood. No one wants to develop low-income housing. And we have it in front of us and now there's issues with the project itself. I mean, like you said, $10,000 in taxes for a plot of lands that's been sitting there that's being overtaken in essence by nature again, pretty much. So, long-term, this has a lot more benefits than negativities. We look at projects all the time and this, you know, this is what RHID is made for, for projects like this. And if it makes it easier for a developer to come in and want to work on projects, especially in the low-income neighborhoods and the places that we need the LMI housing, it's kind of hard to sit there, like you said, two months ago, screaming and yelling that we don't have this and now we have it and there's an issue. So I think we really need to look long-term and see, okay, here's the benefits long-term of this. And here's how it's going to help PICA. How is it going to help, you know, creating more housing after the RHID expires, creating that tax base? So I can't really find anything negative to vote against because of some fact of, we were complaining that this wasn't happening two months ago and it's in front of us now. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vadivjakala.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say again, it was a little bit disconcerting to me to have the negotiating going on right now. But I will say for my colleague, Councilman Dobler, the way that he breaks it down, and we know that, you know, he's the elder in this realm, I don't mean that he's old, I just mean that he's been in this realm for so long. He has a way of cutting through the minutia on many things, not everything, but many, many things that make me feel quite comfortable and that equates to trust with what he is proposing. So with those proposals, I definitely feel that I could support this. But I want staff to know that your hard work is appreciated, I'm sure, by all of us. I cannot imagine all the work that you do every day to bring the need that we have to this city. So both of you sitting there, it's valued and it's seen. But again, I can do this with these amendments that Councilman is talking about. Thank you, Mayor.
I want to check, Braxton, do you have additional to offer? So some conversing going on.
So just to clarify so that everyone's on the same page, because this is going to be a conceptual amendment, right? Because we have to go in and amend the developer agreement and we have to amend the ordinance. So just so everyone's on the same page, there's already a provision in the developer agreement that basically prohibits the sale of the property for 30 years. What Councilmember Dobler had said is that he wants a clawback provision added in there that would basically stop, if they sell the property, it would stop the RHID, right? So...
I assume the developer will agree to that.
Okay. And then the next thing is, is the dollar amount. So the... So, effectively, while I appreciate Kurt's analogy in terms of a percentage of discount or a percentage of taxes, the developer agreement is not going to come at it from that perspective. The developer agreement is going to limit the total amount of the RHID at $12 million. That's the gross amount over the 20 years, and the RHID will be limited to 20 years. Now, the net present value of the 12 million is 6.6. And I had the, just had the discussion with council and the representative from the developer. They can make this deal work at the $12 million RHID and a 20-year limitation.
That's right.
So, that, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, Councilmember Dobler, I'm just restating with clarity what your, what your motion was.
That's exactly what my motion was. Thank you, Braxton.
So, just to make sure, everybody on the governing body understands what's before us? I appreciate all the presentation that was given. Yes, it's unusual, and I really commend both Rianna and Braxton for all the work that they've done. I know that there's been a lot of back and forth on this, and giving every consideration to protecting the city and giving the city the benefit of this opportunity. It is, like it's been said, we talk about having affordable housing, and this presents an opportunity that puts it nearby both the downtown area and east side of Topeka. And I think with a lot of the workers coming back with the two state facilities, there'll be a lot of people looking for some nearby housing. So, I think it's an opportunity that, a long time coming, because I can remember when we first looked at this property years ago, when it was the water tower project, and nothing ever happened from it. So, the discussions, the serious questions about the financing, those are important. I'm glad that we took the time to listen to the presentation so that we clearly understand. So, tomorrow, when somebody calls me and says, what did we do? I want to make sure that they understand what they're voting for this evening. So, there've been a motion and a second, and so we're ready to take the roll call vote.
Councilmember Duncan? Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Baldivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Dobler?
Yes.
Okay. We have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Motion carried. Thank you for your votes and the discussion. Move on now to... Okay, we'll move on to Action Item 5. Get the person who will read.
B is a public hearing to obtain citizen input on the City of Topeka's fiscal year 2025 consolidated annual action plan.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Carrie Higgins, our Housing Division Director, and Rianna Freeman, our Planning and Development Director, will lead us to this item.
All right. Thank you all. So, switching gears here real quick, I'll put on my Carrie hat. So, I just want to do a quick little introduction, then I'll get out of Carrie's way and let her do what she does best, which is everything HUD funding related in Housing Services Division. So, this is the annual process of presenting our consolidated action plan. This process starts back in October, before that, actually, but it starts being publicly posted and shared with the community back out in October. So, we've been working on this for several months now, trying to compile feedback, make shifts and changes as we understand the different demands from different social service agencies, community partners, and NIAs, and certainly open to your feedback and what you hear from your constituents as well. So, I'll let Carrie run through it.
Okay. So, as we talk about the 2025 consolidated action plan tonight, we're going to give you a high-level overview. There is a 116-page detailed document online that you can review to get a little bit more information. But the con-plan is a comprehensive plan that says how we are going to use our HUD entitlement grants, and those include three different grants. It's our Community Development Block Grant, our Home Investment Partnership Program Grant, and the Hirth Emergency Solutions Grant. So, one other thing to note is, this is our 2025 annual con-plan. We also do a five-year con-plan that, the current one runs from 2021 to 2025. So, next year, we will be redoing a new five-year con-plan, which will also include a needs analysis, a housing study, and it will be the point in time where we can make any updates to objectives or changes to the plan that, more changes that we'd want. So, for this year, it is, the one that we're talking about tonight, is our annual one-year 2025 con-plan. So, the framework, the con-plan provides a framework for community dialogue and helps us to set priorities and different goals for the grant funding. So, just to refresh, our Housing Services has a variety of different grants. So, this shows you the different buckets of funding for Housing Services. I'd like to also point out that we have a new bucket this year. So, the orange are two new federal grants that we were able to secure last year. But for tonight, we are talking about the green, which are our three con-plan grants. They are entitlement grants, and it makes up roughly 27% of our funding for Housing Services. Okay, so, the CDVG grant stands for Community Development Block Grant. It is roughly 1.8 million. I do want to note that we are, these numbers you're seeing on the grants are our 2024 allocations. So, we won't receive the 25 numbers from HUD until sometime around the end of May. But because it is entitlement funding, so it's based on our population, and since this data, it won't change much, if at all, so we use these numbers as a stand-in until we get our 25 allocations. So, the CDVG grant, roughly 1.8 million. You can see the different programs that it funds. And in the detailed document online, it will tell you the amounts that are allocated to each program. It'll tell you how many households are assisted for each program. So, for example, our Emergency Repair Program, it receives roughly 290,000, which allows it to assist about 45 households over a year's time. So, these are emergency repairs that allow a family to be able to stay in their home. And all of these programs that you see are for low-to-moderate income households that allows them to stay in their home. And then you also see the service activities that this grant covers. So, it's Dreams, NIA Support, Blight, and then a small amount also goes to Social Services. The Home Grant, it's a little under 500,000 for this one. You can see, again, the programs that it funds. You'll notice Major Rehab is on here. It was also under the CDVG grant. We have several programs that are funded by multiple grants. And then the CHODO you see listed, that stands for Community Housing Development Organizations. We have three of those, Scent, Habitat, and Cornerstone, and they receive roughly 200,000 annually that they help to increase our affordable housing in the community. And then the third grant that makes up the con-plan is the Hirth Emergency Solutions Grant, and this one operates a little bit differently. So, we send out an RFP in July that agencies are able to apply for the funding. It can be used for rapid rehousing, which is first month's rent and deposit for an unsheltered individual to get them into housing. It can be used for homeless prevention, which is paying a month's rent for someone that has an eviction notice so that they can stay housed. Or it can be used for emergency shelter expenses as well. And then we also keep a small portion of this grant. It funds our HMIS system, which is our homeless management information system that HUD requires we use. We cover the cost, but there are over 20 agencies in the community that use that system. It allows us to track our funding and services and helps us to prevent duplication of services as well. Okay, one of the things we do with HUD is we have to leverage other funding and grants with our con-plan grants. So, you'll see here, again, the different buckets of funding for Housing Services. The COC grants, those are HUD grants, but they are competitive grants, whereas the con-plan grants are our entitlement grants. You can see we get some private grants from different community partners. We receive some City of Topeka general funds. The majority of that there, about 1.2 million of it, goes back to the community in services through the SAD and Social Service Grants. And then the federal grants, those are our two new grants, which is the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant and the Lead Reduction Grant. And then the other piece of the con-plan is holding public meetings, making sure that we're getting feedback and input from the citizens and the community. You can see we've held quite a few. We met with the Citizen Advisory Council. We met with the Homeless Task Force. We've had several public meetings and open comment periods. And then we are here before you tonight as a public hearing, and we will be back before you next week, asking for approval on it. We have gotten some feedback, and we are working on making some minor changes. And then, again, next year, as we put together the five-year con-plan, we will be able to make bigger changes if so desired.
I think one more thing I want to add on really quickly is that if you start digging into these attachments, it's not just that we love to use every color of Rainbow and Housing Services. The green is the con-plan. This represents all the con-plan funding and the breakout of everything included, and then the green on every single sheet also represents all of the con-plan programs. So, it's color-coordinated in a way that makes it very easy to follow, thanks to Carrie and her team for pulling that together.
Okay, that's it?
Yep, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just kind of... All right. Any questions for Carrie and Rianna? Councilman, Deputy Mayor?
How at risk are some of these housing funds from the feds right now? Are there, is there any chatter that some of this might be cut?
I think the only answer that I can possibly give at this point is that we're unsure. We're closely watching, closely tracking. We're making sure that we're drawing down our funds as we can and putting them into all the projects that we can, but we're just kind of on hold like everybody else is until we learn more at this point.
Thank you.
Well, before we vote, this also requires a public hearing. So, at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to this matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Who had the presentation, I appreciate that. Any action from the governing body?
I think on this one, they're expecting to vote, for us to vote next week.
Next week? Okay. Thank you.
They've already gave the presentation. Is there a reason why we can't vote on it now?
So, the reason it was listed as an action item is because we have to hold a public hearing before we can have the vote.
Public hearing is...
Yeah.
Trying to get it...
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to Action Item 5C. Madam Clerk?
C is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of Project Numbers 841201 Phase 4 and 291147 Phase 1 for alley repair in the 1600 block between Polk Street and Tyler Street.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the governing body. Steve Groh and our Director of Public Works will lead us to this item.
Good evening, Mayor and governing body. This project is part of our 2025 Alley Repair Program, including alley repairs in the 1600 block between Polk Street and Tyler Street. This project will consist of removing and replacing concrete pavement and replacing the sanitary sewer due to age and condition. The project is funded of $208,000 of citywide half-cent sales tax and $240,750 of wastewater operating fund.
Have any questions for Steve? Is there a motion to consider?
Motion.
Motion to approve by Councilman Banks, second from Councilwoman Ortiz, to call the rolls played.
All right. Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Baldivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Dobler? Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer?
Yes.
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Move to Action Item 5D. Madam Clerk?
D is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, amending the 2025 to 2034 CIP and the 2025 to 2027 CIB to add Project Number 701070 for street improvement and construction of a shared-use path on the 45th Street from Gage to Cambridge.
Steve?
Yes, sir. This was also presented to the hard-working PI Committee a few weeks ago. This project, we're requesting amending the 2025 to 2034 CIP and the 25 to 27 CIB for street improvement and construction of a shared-use path. Upon approval, we would be looking to construct a shared-use path in 2026, commence utility relocations in '27, and then follow up with roadway construction in 2028. This would be a $4 million budget item, split between the half-cent citywide sales tax and general obligation bonds. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Councilwoman Bardivia Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. I do, we received an email shortly before or around 5:00, and this was from a citizen, and I'm going to share it and ask that the clerk's office put it as part of the public record. I talked with this gentleman afterwards, and I told him I had no idea to the, you know, the answers to the questions he had had. So, I'm going to run some of these by you, Steve. And, okay, so, it was seen as a $4 million price tag, and the issue was turned is that it was for 2,500 feet, and that he wanted to understand why it was so costly, and he used as comparison the project of 29th Street from Adams to California was 5,200 feet, literally twice the distance, with a price tag of only 1 point, or not only, but 1.75 million, less than half the price at twice the distance. It included curb and gutter, wastewater, stormwater, utility replacements, the works. So, he wanted some clarity as to what was the price differential. And if you could give that to me tonight, I totally understand, because that's throwing that other project that I am reading from his email. But if I could get some comparison difference on the price differential and the concerns that he had, like tomorrow or the next day, I mean, I'm not going to push you against the table and go and answer all this now, because I know it's probably not going to all be answerable, but that's the questions I had.
Steve?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, actually, I can give you an answer on that tonight. This project, unlike the other project, at this point, it contains almost $1 million of design, probable right-of-way acquisition and contract administration, the $3 million estimate for the roadway. This project is full reconstruction. There is a large culvert that will probably need to be replaced. That's a big part of this cost, plus utilities. The project this gentleman referenced was a mill and overlay with some curb and gutter and pavement and sidewalk replacement, and a lot of utility lining and repair. It wasn't a full reconstruct like this section. We ran the numbers again today, and our city engineer and I are very comfortable with this project estimate. Plus, the previous project was based on 24 numbers. This is out a few years, and we have to take inflation and the uncertain tariff and other items into consideration to get a budget number.
Well, thank you for that. I'll have this resident look at this part of the meeting that will be, you know, on record, well, tonight and tomorrow, but I thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, then Councilwoman Heller?
So, I see there's a shared-use path on this project here, correct?
That is correct.
I just, in that section, right?
I just, in that section, I don't understand why we're kind of putting that there. Most, I mean, I travel that area a bunch, most people walk the neighborhoods. And I just think if we put a shared use path out there, I don't think it's, honestly, I don't think it's going to get used. And that road is actually not that bad. I can think of 17th Street, pretty much the whole distance of 17th Street is in such worse off than this project is, that it's kind of perplexing that we're going to dump this much money into a road that doesn't necessarily have as much traffic as some of our other main roads in Topeka, and invest this much in money and also with time and effort by doing the shared use path, that to me, we have a lot more pressing needs in the city for our roads than in that area right there. I just, I don't see the benefit in the short term to be working on this project when, like I said, there's so many other main roads that need it so much more, that have so much more traffic.
Councilwoman Heller?
Well, I have a first cousin question to that, I guess. Did I read correctly that this is a project that wasn't even in the CIP before?
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, this was a request to tie in to the existing trail on Gage to get over to that neighborhood, and also there's the golf course and health facility there that was part of the request. There's also some drainage issues we're hoping to request. It was a request that came into Public Works a few months ago, and we started looking at it then.
Okay, I guess I was just surprised to see it all together, particularly when we're making some tough decisions on timing and so on, and I didn't, I appreciated that little letter from the constituent, because I, you know, we were spending countywide half-cent sales tax money on most of our peripheral roads not long ago. How old is this, the road that we're talking about?
I'd have to look into that, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, because it's so major, I mean, to do a total redo and to widen it and to the trails out of nowhere. I guess we just got offered the CIP, and it is pretty expensive, and so adding something that we hadn't even considered before right now was a little bit of a surprise, I guess.
For the government, any motion from the body?
I moved, we moved this to next week to get some answers to some of our questions, or to our future date, to get some answers to some of our questions on this.
Is there a second?
Second.
I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear what you said.
I said, I moved, have this moved to a future date to be set, to get some of these questions answered.
I still can't hear, sorry.
Councilwoman Dobler, Braxton Kopley has just come to the mic so he can maybe answer some questions.
Okay, I could hear that, Mayor, thank you.
Councilwoman Dobler, can you, can you hear, can you hear me okay?
I can, Braxton, thank you.
Thank you. This project is located in Councilmember Dobler's neighborhood. I have been in that neighborhood several times, and routinely, I'm asked when a sidewalk is going to be constructed along there, because there is not a safe way for people in those neighborhoods to get into adjacent neighborhoods. It's contemplated to do the shared use path on likely the north side of the street, and that would be the first phase of construction, and that would be to address the issue that currently there are no sidewalks on there, and that it is dangerous for people trying to walk in the grass to get to the country club. And the reason why we're going with the shared use path, besides the complete streets concept, it's because there would only be a single path on one side of the street, and when you only have a single path, you know that you're going to have two-way traffic, pedestrian and bicycle, and so that's why the intent is to go with a shared use path, assuming that we can fit it in there. We still have survey to do, it may be that we can only fit a five, but the idea is, there is a pent-up demand, there currently are no sidewalks on either side, it's to provide a single sidewalk on the north side, 10 feet wide, to allow for and accommodate two-way traffic. This is one of those where 20 years ago, when these subdivisions were constructed, someone missed the ball, and that is, the developers should have been required to upgrade that street, 45th Street, from the rural profile two-lane road to a three-lane profile urban road with curb and gutter to be able to allow for a turn lane for people to safely turn off of that. But, you know, we, I mean, this was brought to our attention, we've looked at it, yes, could we have, did someone miss the ball 20 years ago that basically would have required those developers on either side to bear some portion of that? Yes, but the reality is, we have a problem to solve. And that is to provide safe road for all users out there, because right now it's not. It's a rural-profile two-lane road. We are going to have to have this modeled, but I think in all likelihood, given the existing developments on both sides of the road, plus the additional potential for development further to the east, likely the recommendation is going to be go back and do it as a three-lane road. Hence, the construction cost estimate that we have put together is predicated on a three-lane road. So, hopefully, that provides some context in terms of the driver of this, Councilmember Dobler, as this is in his district, plus the fact that I have been at a number of neighborhood meetings and routinely get asked when we're going to improve that road, and when we're going to provide safe sidewalks for people to be able to transport. If there are any questions that I missed, I'm happy to address those. Did you hear that okay, Councilmember Dobler?
I did, and I have a follow-up question, and maybe you just alluded to it a little bit, Braxton. I believe there's, I believe there's a plan in the works to subdivide the property to the east on the north side of 45th, is that correct?
Yeah, Jason to Floyd McMillan's Misty Harbor, that, I know that they're in discussions with the, with the planning department over that, and that would be adding an additional, I believe, 20, 20 units? Yeah, additional 20 units.
I mean, this, this is really some of the most developable property we have left that can be developed adjacent to the city limits. So, the further, the further that development goes to the east, we simply can't just perpetuate the issue that's out there now, and that we're dealing with a county road with no sidewalks. I think somebody mentioned 17th Street or whatever. Not a lot of places with a major arterial and subdivisions like that feeding in that don't have some way for folks to traverse up and down the street. I think when I initially brought this project up, it was just can we get a sidewalk somehow in on the north side? It doesn't make sense to go out and put a sidewalk and then come back in five or 10 years and tear it all up and build a street. So, you know, maybe the, maybe the street doesn't get put in right away, but the leak profile is designed and an adequate sidewalk is put in, and if that happens, the folks that pay taxes like anybody else in the city have the advantage of having an ability to walk along 45th Street. We push for walkability and pedestrian access and complete streets, that's about as incomplete of a street as you can find in Topeka. So, I would hope that we could move this ahead. If people want to put a caveat on it, that, you know, some planning is done up front, and we come back with a better cost estimate, that's fine, and maybe that's what Councilman Kel was suggesting, I don't know. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, like I said, I go out that way, I go to the golf course out there, go to Berkshire, and I just don't see the traffic out there. And that's, I mean, I go different times a day, different days of the week, I just don't see the traffic out there. Yes, if it's tying into, you know, the shared use path is tying into something else, I could possibly see that, but in the three lanes, I just, that's, that's a big waste there to me, is like, that's definitely not needed. And, you know, there's plenty of main roads in Topeka that don't have a sidewalk on either side, that have people walking in the street, like Kansas Avenue, around Corray area to, to, to Aldis there at 29th. So, like I said, to me, there's a lot more use in our main part of the city that has a lot more foot traffic and a lot more driving traffic that need help. You know, I could say yes to this project, we tapered it down, but to sit there and say three lanes and a probably eight to 10-foot shared path, this to me is, is reaching pretty far. And I've only heard, I know that people have said there, said there's been asked about this. I've only had one person over the last four, four years, three years, excuse me, and sit there and just hammer this issue, and when I, you know, I just don't see people, the use, I mean, there's a crosswalk in front of the golf course. People use it all the time, and it's not like we have to stand there for five minutes to cross the road. It's usually car goes by, we walk right on by, and there's not another car for two, three minutes. So, I just, I don't see the benefit long-term to put $4 million into this project when we have so much worse off roads that need help with their drainage, with their sidewalks and their roads. Thank you.
Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, just not to get on either Dobler or your side of the argument, just when it comes to the traffic, I will say that in my time during utilizing that golf club, not a country club, but the golf club with First Tee, there is a lot of traffic right there. There is so much so to where we had to implement very stringent rules, and when kids could go to the bathroom, because the only bathroom that they could use was across at the clubhouse, and because there's so many people who are used to just moving through that spot, they don't take into account a lot of the walkers that walk on that road, and also the pedestrians and kids who are doing that crosswalk. There's tons of times that people drive by that if I would have been in my younger days, might have got a golf ball or a golf club on their vehicle, quite simply because they weren't worrying about the people that were walking by there. So, I do see a lot of traffic go through, so I can understand and justification that Dobler is talking about how we could just go with a shared walk and maybe not redo the road. I think that would be a great compromise, but I do understand the need of what they're talking about for the neighborhood, because I have seen it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Dobler, did you have one more comment? I saw your hand.
Yeah, I think the action before us is to put this in, into the CIP, is that correct? It's not an approval of an engineering contract or a project, is that correct?
That is correct. This is to amend the, amend the CIP to get this into the CIP. The idea would be to get started with survey and design, to see if we can fit a shared use path in, but more importantly, to do the traffic study, to do the analysis of whether three lanes is warranted or whether two lanes. And we will defer to the traffic engineer in terms of the study, in terms of what's warranted. We don't build a three-lane road if only a two-lane road is needed. But, and the concept was, get started on design survey, move forward initially with the shared use path, knowing that we're not going to, exactly where it's going to be, exactly where the road's going to be, to get that done, and then by its time for right-of-way acquisition, and then move into the construction. So, the design contract will need to come back before this governing body, as well as the actual project approval, because it's over 250,000.
Very good, thank you. So, there's two other, two other gates that this project has to pass through this council, Braxton says, the design contract, and then the actual approval of the, of the project. All right, thank you, thank you.
Right now, we have a motion and a second to defer this. Is there somebody else?
I have a, no, I have a question. What did you say, Mayor? I'm sorry.
Okay. Right now, we have a motion and a second to defer this to next week. So, the vote we take right now will be whether or not we will defer or continue with the vote tonight. So, if you vote no, that means we will continue with the no. If you vote yes, we will continue it next week. Okay?
Got it.
Correct?
Thank you.
Am I correct? You look puzzled, he doesn't.
Yeah, who motioned? I didn't get...
Deputy Mayor did, and seconded by Councilwoman Heller.
Okay. So, the motion is to move to a future date at this time?
Yeah, it wasn't next week.
To next week?
Well, I initially said next, sorry. I initially said next week, but then I set a date forward, just in case, I wasn't sure if people needed a little bit more time, so I was leaving that for discussion, how much time we needed.
Okay. So, the motion would be to move it to April 8?
Eight.
Okay.
Okay. You understand that now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, again, Councilwoman Heller?
A question, just to frame it before we leave off, if, because we're about to start consideration of the CIP, if we amend, next week or today, whenever, amend the CIP that we have, we are, with the presentation later on in this agenda, going to open the door to reviewing all of the CIP again, which would include this item, right? Either adding it later or moving it after further discussion, is that right?
So, the idea was to amend the existing 2025 CIP so that we would have the ability to get started on the design now and not have to wait until 2026, or have to wait until we get the 2026 CIB/CIP adopted.
Mayor?
Thank you. Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you can hear me. I won't be supporting this amendment, because if it's just adding it in, and if that means we have to do a little bit more work, I'm okay with that, so I won't be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Okay. We'll call the roll. To defer.
Okay. Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
No.
Banks?
No.
Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
No.
Duncan?
No.
And Hofer?
No.
And Mayor Padilla?
No.
Okay, so we have seven no.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
The motion will fail.
Because this committee has worked so dang hard, I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, seconded by Councilman Banks. If you'll call the roll, please.
Okay. So, we are going to do, Councilmember Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kel?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
And Heller?
Yes.
Okay, we have nine yes, the motion will carry.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I have a follow-up question? There was a comment, various comments were made, and then just now, that the committee had worked so hard on this. The letter that we got from the constituent said, and I didn't check it myself, because I read his letter, that there was, the minutes of the Public Works Infrastructure Committee did not indicate that there had been any discussion whatsoever about this project. And so, I didn't know anything about it myself, and with that person's observation, that the minutes didn't indicate that there was any discussion, there wasn't any place to research. Just saying. Well, just in terms of what's on the agenda then for all of us, so that we can do that reference. Thank you.
Excuse me?
And so I didn't know anything about it myself. And with that person's observation that the minutes didn't indicate that there was any discussion, there wasn't any place to research. Just saying. Well, just in terms of what's on the agenda then for all of us so that we can do that reference. Thank you.
Now, Deputy Mayor has brought to my attention that it's now 8:30. We'll take a quick five-minute recess and come back into session at 20:35. Yeah. We're back from recess and we'll proceed with action item 5E. If you'll read, please.
All right. E is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 701040, 281250, Phase 17, 291143, Phase 4, 502730, 502730, Phase 1, and 281250, Phase 17 for street rehabilitation, utility improvements, and bridge maintenance for Southwest Fairlon Road from 23rd Street to 28th Street.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this item was before the, your body here and was approved back on February 11th. Following that approval, the Utilities Division had some concern about the scope of the water main replacement for the project as, as approved. There were questions as to whether or not the storm sewer added to the project to meet the hydraulic design for this job would clear the existing water main, as well as there were some frost concerns about the proximity of the water main. There's also no existing water from 23rd Street to 23rd Terrace, so this also gave us an opportunity to complete that loop. So that's why we're back, is to increase the scope of the project to, to increase the amount of water main being replaced, and we're looking for your approval.
You've heard the, uh, presentation. Is there a motion from the body? Motion to approve. Motion to approve from Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Banks. If you'll call the roll, please.
Um, Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
And Valdivia Akala?
Yeah.
We have nine yes. The motion carries.
Move on to action item 5F. Madam clerk?
F is the approval of an agreement between the City of Topeka and Prevention and Resilience Services, Inc. for the operation of the Safe Streets Program.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Josh Mack and Arnie, our Budget and Finance Division Director, will lead us to this item.
Good evening, Mayor. Governing body, um, this is just a review of two weeks ago. So, um, PARZ is operating the Safe Streets Program and we had to kind of go back and rework the contract since they're no longer offering nationalized, the service is gonna be offered in-house. And so what's before you is amending the previous contract down from $61,000 to basically $45,000, $45,000. And this was, money was already allocated in the 2025 budget and, uh, it was, it was already earmarked there. So this isn't anything that was unbudgeted. So with that, we'll, we'd be asking for, um, action on this item tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Josh?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Hofer?
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Valdivia Akala. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Banks. If you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
Okay. We have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay, we have nine yeses and now we'll go, trying to see where it was. From the consent agenda, we moved it to 5G as an action item. If you'll read that again for us, Madam clerk.
Okay. G is the approval of a professional services contract between the City of Topeka and Wat- Watkins Colaroff Law Firm to represent the city in a civil lawsuit matter.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, I'll ask Nick Jefferson, uh, from our City Attorney's Office to lead us to this item.
Um, tonight, the legal department is asking for the continuation of a contract we have with a law firm who is currently representing some of our employees in an individual capacity in a lawsuit in federal district court. As part of a background as to kind of why we do this or what we're asking for, uh, it's important to note that the city has a statutory obligation to defend its employees whenever they are involved in a civil action that involves something having to do with the scope of their employment. That is under, I believe, it's in the Kansas Torque Claims Act, I believe it's, uh, KSA 75-6108. Uh, we also, as you probably know, I'm sure you know, um, have several collective bargaining agreements with our unions and some of those agreements require us contractually to defend, uh, any employees who fall under that agreement. This is one of those cases. Uh, so we have both a statutory duty and a contractual duty to defend these individual employees in this matter. With that, uh, I would ask that you go ahead and approve the continuation of this contract. The city is representing itself in the matter. Uh, my division is representing the city and we have this law firm who's, uh, defending the individual officers. Uh, I can't go into any details about the case itself, as you probably all understand, as we are in active litigation, but that's kind of the background of why we are asking for this continuation of the contract.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you. Uh, I just need clarification again, is, is this part of the case from either you or from the city manager, whoever, uh, that is about the killing of Taylor Lowery?
Uh, yes, Councilmember. This is the case that does involve Mr. Lowery.
Okay. So this is not, then I'm going to make my comments as I have the right to do. I'm not going to support this and I do want it to be known for transparency at a meeting. I think that we have a number of cases that we're losing. I think that there are serious issues that we have, uh, that need to be looked in more deeply into a number of the cases that we continue to pay out on. Uh, I am going to be wanting to get information for the past 10 years. I've looked at this, I'll, I'll contact the city manager on how much we have paid out, taxpayer money for these cases, how much we have paid out for third-party contracting for lawyers, uh, and if it's a norm to do a third party or do some cities have this done within, uh, you know, in-house. But I also have, and, and this is my opinion, I believe that in these type of cases where there continues to be the killing, the brutal killings of black males, uh, by our police force, I think something is gonna have to change, whether that is releasing the body camp, uh, being more open with community on really what's going on, looking seriously at de-escalation, the use of force, et cetera, and that sometimes we are just going to have to negotiate a settlement rather than trying this to death. Thank you.
Councilman Banks?
Do we defend even if we know that there's, do we defend even if we know there are some wrongful actions that have taken place or what do we do in those situations?
Uh, again, I can only speak generally. Um, yes, we have an obligation both ethically, statutorily, contractually, to defend, to reach the best possible outcome, uh, for the city and its employees. Uh, that being said, I'll give you the most lawyer answer ever. It depends. Uh, everything depends on the case and that affects, you know, when we choose to, all of these cases require certain steps such as mediation at some point, those type of things, and there's always negotiation back and forth. Um, that is not precluded even though we are actively defending. Um, in any case, in any case, that actively defending helps generally put us in a better position to negotiate if, if that, if we deem that to be the correct route. Um, I hope that helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Nick, you did say that we are legally, um, contractually obligated to provide the legal assistance in our union, in the union contract. So by not doing so would violate their contract. Is that correct?
Yes. I, I, I think that any of the unions whom we had negotiated that as a provision of their contract would probably be quite upset with us if we did not uphold our end of that bargain.
And then they would be able to come back and file lawsuits as well against us if we were.
Potentially. There could be other routes that they could go under the contract, but.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Nick, to be clear, this is just applicable to city employees who are covered by the contract, correct?
No, we have a statutory obligation as well under the Kansas Torque Claims Act, um, absent some sort of exigent circumstance, but yeah, in general, most of the time, yes, we have an obligation under 75-6108.
I just don't want to get focused just on people covered by the contract.
Sure.
It's our responsibility to cover every city employee acting in any official duty earned their capacity as a city employee.
Right.
Okay. All right. Uh, so there has been, uh, a motion to move this to action item. So is there a motion? Councilwoman or, uh, Hiller?
I, I just had a question for him.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, that, all that said, because I think there's some understandable concerns about any situation, this one and others, um, that does not preclude human relation or human resources or departments from, if somebody did make a mistake or wasn't performing well, that doesn't preclude the city from internally addressing policy or issues that have come to light because of a certain situation?
No, certainly not. Um, that doesn't preclude any action by management to handle unemployment action internally.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Motion to approve? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Ortiz. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Dobler.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Banks?
No.
Okay. We have seven yes. The motion carries.
Okay. That concludes our action items on the agenda this evening. Move down on the agenda to non-action items if the clerk will read.
Okay. Um, 6A is a discussion concerning the Kansas Homeland Security Region Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Jason Tryon, Deputy Public Works Director, will lead us to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what this item is, is discussion only with an opportunity for action next week. So the Code of Federal Regulations requires that local governments have a mitigation plan in place in order to receive funding through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, uh, which is administered by FEMA. Um, the plan that we have here was a plan that was developed by a contractor. It's a plan that the city has signed on to before, uh, to identify hazards in this region and mitigation strategies to address them. Uh, Shawnee County Emergency Management is the responsible party for making sure that the municipalities and organizations within this region have adopted this plan. Uh, Dusty Nichols did intend to be with us tonight, but unfortunately, due to the risk of inclement weather, he was unable to join us. Um, so just a couple of clarifications. Uh, this does not place any funding obligations onto the city by adopting this plan. It also does not, uh, have the city take on any liability by adopting this plan. Uh, similarly, while this makes us eligible for grants, it does not mean we would receive those grants. Uh, this would just be necessary to be adopted in order for the city to apply for those grants or receive them in the future. So with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Okay. Councilman Miller? Move to approve?
Well, no.
Disrepute.
That's right. You're fine. You're fine.
I know the work has been, I'm sorry.
Councilman Duncan?
I support this. No issues here. I understand why you need to do it, but I'm gonna take this opportunity to just make a comment as we head into the CIP that's related to this. Um, we have done, we serve as this emergency hub for the state of Kansas, for this region, for FEMA as this region when these issues arise, not just for our own city, but for multiple counties and, and this area. In fact, things like our hazmat unit and other parts of our, both fire and police departments can be called in and are critical components of those. The reason I bring that up is related to this is we do absolutely almost nothing in reminding our good friends in Congress, and I know that's a little messy up there right now, but, and, and the good friends at the state, that they should play a part in providing us some funding for the parts that we continue to have to upgrade and have on hand to make sure we can be a critical piece of that. And as we get into the CIP and look at what some of those may be, such as upgrades to our hazmat unit, equipment that's related to those, I would just like us to make a note to start having those conversations with our congressional delegation and with our state representatives in the governor's office about the importance of our need to be supportive financially of those pieces because of the importance that they play, both to the state and the feds, when there is, whether it's a natural disaster or other issue that arises. So this is just, so I just wanted to point that out tonight because it is related to this as we move forward. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. Um, as you might have noticed, if you looked at the whole, all the attachments that we had, we had a couple of 100-plus-page documents, including this one. Um, just using an opportunity like tonight as a chance to refresh for us, I think it would have been really helpful to have sort of a Cliff's Notes in there of what's changed, um, in particular, or, you know, just some highlights out of that that we should know. Do you know, are, are there any changes in this one from the most recent one?
No, there are no significant changes. Um, the threats that were identified were essentially the same threats that have been identified before and the mitigation strategies are the same. Uh, I can certainly reach out, uh, if there's a summary document available, because as you said, the, the plan itself is over 400 pages long. Uh, if there is a summary document, then we would certainly provide that.
Thank you. I, I'd appreciate it whenever this comes up just because that way we know. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you. I support what Councilman Dobler, or Dobler, Duncan was saying in that as one who's pushed basically since I first got on council for our emergency preparedness, uh, for crisis management, all of that, and, you know, having at times to depend on, on the county more. I mean, I think that we do need that help with additional funding. I think we might be holding our breath thinking that we're gonna get it from the feds, but I think definitely it's something that we need to continue to work into our really proactive legislative, um, agenda. Um, I know we've had some frustrations with our legislative agenda this past session. I don't wanna go into that unhappiness, but I, I do agree strongly. We need to be, uh, asking for that, that funding, that help and that support because our citizens, uh, need it. Thank you.
Okay. Further comments? Okay. Thank you, Jayden. Okay. We'll move on to, uh, non-action item 6B.
These, uh, discussion of the proposed 2026 to 2020, 35, or 2035 Capital Improvement Plan and 2026 to 2028 Capital Improvement Budget.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Josh Mack and Arnie, our, uh, Budget and Finance Division Director, will lead us to this item.
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Governing body. So tonight, we're kind of switching gears. We've been talking a lot about the operating budget recently, so now we're going into the, what, the long-range capital improvement budgets and we'll get into how does a project get in the CIP, how is it funded, um, and kind of the gist of that stuff. So like I said, what's the policy? the, what, the long-range capital improvement budgets, and we'll get into how does a project get in the CIP, how is it funded, and kind of the gist of that stuff. So like I said, what's the policy? Where does the money come from? Kind of some challenges and constraints we have as a staff in developing a CIP, and then just kind of a tutorial of how to read the document that we sent out two weeks ago. So this is our kind of a presentation roadmap. Tonight, we're just doing a general overview for the public, for those who maybe not know what a CIP is, and then we're going to get into departments such as Public Works and Utilities where that's where the majority of the projects come from, roads, bridges, water lines, et cetera. And then we'll kind of go from there based off feedback we get from the governing body and anything that the governing body would like to know before eventually voting on several weeks from now. So a couple of terms that we use, we use, that you've heard tonight during, when you're approving the PWI committee projects, is that the first three years is what we call the CIB. So that's, those numbers are pretty definitive, and it gives the idea of what we're spending in the public. And then the capital improvement plan in general is we may put stuff that we know is coming down the pipeline ten years from now, but it could be a critical need for the city just to let the governing body know that it's coming. And the CIP is approved annually by the governing body. Now, just because it is approved, that doesn't mean the bonds, we have authority to sell the bonds. That's a totally different process. So the CIP is a good first step in planning out the year and the future years of what we're going to do as a city to improve our infrastructure. And finally, it serves as a communication document for the public. This lets the public know of where their half-cent sales tax money is going, how much, how much we put in roads, how much we put in alleys, et cetera. And that's just a diagram where we identify something out ten years in advance and it gets closer. We kind of have it on a time horizon. We have a better idea of what the project's going to be for, the specific scope and how much it's going to cost. And finally, how does something get in the CIP? So think of something tangible. This is the specific policy that the council adopted several years back, but typically it's something tangible. Think a road, a bridge, water line, like I said earlier, and it's usually that doesn't sit, something that fits in one-year operating budget. These are projects that take a design phase, acquire it right away, and then eventually constructing the project later down the line. And an important note, this happened two years ago, so Councilman Dobler alluded to it earlier tonight, where just because it's approved in the CIP, there's a multi-pronged process before it actually gets out onto the street. So any project over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars has to go back to the PWI Committee for approval. That, a couple of those were approved tonight. So long story short of this, just because you see it once in the CIP doesn't mean you're going to not see it again. You're going to see it multiple times, and you're going to prove a design contract or construction contract, et cetera. And then this is, these are funding sources that we use in the CIP. I won't go through all of these, but the citywide half-cent sales tax, that's fixing existing streets, sidewalks, curb and gutter. The countywide half-cent sales tax, that was, those are specific designated projects. We bond projects that is either funded by, for geo-bonds, that's funded by mainly property taxes, and then the revenue bonds are funded by the ratepayers that water bills. And then so those are some examples of projects in the CIP that use each one of those funding sources. Those are past examples and some present. And what are some things that we have to consider as a staff when we're making CIP? So first, obviously, funds aren't unlimited. We only have so much citywide half-cent sales tax money coming in. We only can bond so much, and we have to, our revenue bonds have to be backed by the ability to generate revenue from ratepayers. And then also, within those funds, they can only be spent on certain things. So for example, the countywide half-cent sales tax are earmarked specific projects. Citywide half-cent sales tax can only be used on existing streets, roads, sidewalks, et cetera, and we're going to go over that in the coming weeks, but this is just a high-level overview. And then finally, we have timing considerations. So a good example is with Polk Quincy going on right now, we're using fourth to sixth on Kansas as a detour route. A couple of years ago, before Polk Quincy was in the works, that was identified in CIP as an improvement, but since that's a detour route and traffic has to go somewhere, that was later pushed down, pushed down the road. So we have to, we have to take into those accounts some of those things, too. And then finally, this is just, if you're looking in the book and you have any questions, this is just a short synopsis on page six and seven on, on what a project page looks like. So for example, this is for our ADA ramp program. So the way to read this page is it's funded by the Fix Our Street Sales Tax, which is the citywide half-cent sales tax, and we, for the next five years, we're planning on putting three-hundred thousand dollars to fix ADA ramps across the city. So that's just a quick and high-level overview, and again, we're going to be viewing this over the next two months, and we're going to go by funding source and by departments where we're kind of getting the nitty-gritty. But this is a good first step of determining what products are, are important or may not be important as we move on for the coming years.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Josh? Councilwoman Hillary?
Just, just one request at this point. Josh and I had some back and forth when the book first came out. The slide points out that we have a cap, a council-avoted cap of twenty-seven million per, every three-year period for geo-bonds. Also, when the, when the citywide half-cent sales tax was passed, it was intended to repair our streets and get them back up to standard, and the proposal that's in here has three million dollars for annual maintenance, which was not the intent of, of the passage of that. I would like to see a version of this brought forth to us as we move into these considerations that reserves the half-cent sales tax money for the street projects as it was intended and that does not, that stays at or under that cap of twenty-seven million per three years. See what that looks like.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Anything else for Josh? Okay. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate it. Okay. Move to public comment. Two individuals signed up this evening. First is Mr. Henry McLaure.
Great segue tonight. Remember the ballot? When we approved all those roads? Do you? I thought Braxton the other day said we had a sixteen-and-a-half million dollar shortfall on those roads. I don't know, I'd love to be corrected. It'd be great if that wasn't true. But the very first part is, the very first one's economic development. We put economic development on there, and that's all it says, is just economic development and then all the roads. So when you're looking at it, economic development. Yeah, okay, why not? But look where we've gone with economic development. It's like pornography. You know it when you see it. And for me, when I see economic development, let's, let's, let's look at the AT&amp;T building. That's not economic development. You don't want to put nine-and-a-half million dollars in a bad deal when you've got problems with roads. We don't have good roads. All we got to do, I think the duty of government is to give a guy good roads, police protection, fire protection, clean water, and butt out. It was a shame tonight. Well, here, let's, let's talk real quick. Attached to that is a decor request that I made, which was a joke. Rich Eckert, that's the longest non-answer I've ever seen from a lawyer. Why can't we know what the lease is today? Oh, I loved it earlier when somebody said off-putting. Yeah, that's really off-putting to be up here trying to make a deal on the fly. We sit here in the audience at home, and we, we're just basically told what's going to happen. We don't really have a say in our government. We really don't. At least, I don't feel like I got a say. But the Greater Topeka Partnership, the Chamber, the NGOs, they got the say. Think about it. You want to talk about off-putting, so you've, you've deferred your economic development to go Topeka by contract. They have board meetings that we can't attend, and you're up there having the pudding, we're not, but you're making decisions behind closed doors. We don't know? I mean, think about that. So I ask about the lease? Well, there isn't a lease. Don't sign the lease. That's not economic development. Then out of courtesy, I want to know who really owns the building? Because you can change the members of an LLC. You can walk down there tomorrow morning, and the members of an LLC can change. So I'm just trying to ask, well, who really is it? And then you, you have ex parte communications here? Well, why don't we have ex parte donations? Let's say that that fellow that owns it, let's say, let's just say for the record, I think it could be Cody Foster, who also has a internal, or an IRB. He ain't paying the freight on sales tax today, but how much does he donate to those NGOs? It's a shame where we've gone with economic development. And the nine-and-a-half million dollars on that deal, it'll be far worse than any hotel purchase. And the voters are going to know about it, because I'm going to do my best to get the word out. So thanks for your time tonight. Don't sign that lease.
Okay. The next person we have signed up is Devon Welcher. Devon Welcher?
She went home.
Okay. No one else has signed up? We'll move on to announcements. Madam Clerk?
So for the April eighth governing body agenda, we will have two merril proclamations. We have two appointments. We have a board appointment to the Board of Electric, Electrical Appeals, and a committee appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Review Committee. We will have two presentations. On the consent agenda, we have a professional engineering contract with Bartlett and West, Inc., for the stormwater pump station master plan. Action items, we will have the public hearing and ordinance for the Community Improvement District for Lawrence Bay Lots. B, we have a resolution for the Kansas Homeland Security Hazard Mitigation Plan. We'll have the resolution on C for the approving budget exceeding two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the Ward-Martin Creek Restoration, Stabilization, and Rehabilitation. D, we have an approval of the City of Topeka's Fiscal Year 2025 Consolidated Annual Action Plan and Budget, and then we have the ordinance for the ambulance services. We have one non-action item for a discussion for the twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty-eight Capital Improvement Plan and the twenty-twenty-eight to twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-eight Budget CIB, and that is all that I have for you. Thank you.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing for me this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz, we'll start with you.
On April the sixth, our Way to Work program orientation will be held beginning at one o'clock, from one, beginning at one to two, I guess, two o'clock, and it's for our kids fourteen, the ages of fourteen through sixteen. If they want to get a job, they got to bring their parents. It's a summer job through the program. Very good, very good. I, I do meet a lot of kids, and they're very grateful for this, Mr. Mayor. I think you've attended before, and several of the council, of my colleagues, and it's, it's really worth it. I, I met a little girl last year that was able to buy all her school clothes because of this, so it's, it's, it's very much, very much needed for our young people. I also want to say, you know, this, this week has been, with our young people, very tragic. We've had some, some deaths that were, could, could have possibly been prevented, so I just want to say to the adults, if you see a young person, a teenager, talk to them. Sit there and talk to them. Introduce yourself to them and give them a hug, because it's much, much needed, especially in these days and times that we're going through. They don't know where they're going. A lot of the kids that are graduating from school, you know, think back to when you were that age and, and how you felt, but our kids are really suffering right now, and, and give them a hug. Just show them that you love them. Buy them a Coke if you see them at McDonald's. Make that effort. It, it goes a long way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Deputy Mayor?
A couple of weeks ago, we lost a Topecan that is well-known throughout the state of Kansas and well-known throughout the nation. Bob Davis was a graduate of Topeka West in Washburn. He's most known for being the voice of the KU Jayhawks for their football and basketball programs, along with being the, the voice of the Kansas City Royals for a time period. Like I said, for some of us, that's, that's the voice of our youth. There, you know, there's, I'm getting to that age now that people that I idolized as a kid are no longer so around, you know, Bob Uker's another one that I idolized as a kid. So I say, look at, look at what's around you, enjoy what's around you, because one day it won't be there anymore. I have to commend Councilman Miller, the Public Works people for doing the crosswalk. I had to bang the drum a couple of years ago on thirty-seventh and forty-fifth on the trail to put in the flashing crosswalks, and they've been great ever since they've gone in. If you see an area that is, you know, people are never stopping at a crosswalk, please let us know. We'll look at, possibly invest it into the flashing ones. They make such a great, great difference to actually getting people to stop. And finally, in about the last six weeks or so, I've lost about fifteen pounds, and that's on my goal to get from two-hundred-and-eighty-eight, which I was about two months ago, down to about two-hundred pounds. And my wife came up with a great idea that she heard, which is to donate that amount of poundage and food to a local food bank. So as everyone's getting ready for swimsuit season, as you're trying to lose some weight, think about donating your poundage and food, your poundage and money to a charity that you really appreciate, or use that, you know, if you're only going to be losing maybe ten pounds, look at that as, as hours you can donate of your time to a different organization. So, you know, it's one of those things that makes us healthier, but it also gives back to our community. So please think about doing that. And once my wife said that, that was the idea, I was like, let's go for it. That, you know, I'm more than happy to donate a third of my weight away, and slowly, slowly but surely I'll get there, but it's, like I said, as everyone's getting ready to kind of get into the summer, think about ways you can give back to your community. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Nothing for me, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler? Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I wasn't going to mention, but since, I'll just piggyback off of Councilman Kell, just because he brought up Bob Davis. My former life, as some people know, I was a newspaper reporter, journalist, including a sports, primarily a sports reporter for many years, including five years when I was at the University of Kansas and also working for the Topeka Capital Journal, and I got to know Mr. Davis pretty well. We, we spent a lot of time sitting around in press rooms, waiting to hear from people and talk to people, and he would just randomly talk to me, and he didn't have to. He could have just ignored the student journalist sitting in the corner and left me alone, but he always talked to me, and I...
Uh-oh.
Councilman, there you are, okay.
So, yep, I echo those comments about the loss of Mr. Davis. I want to say, my second comment, Mayor, is I'm going to spend the rest of the bulk of this week traveling across the state of Kansas on behalf of my day job with the league of Kansas municipalities, parts of the middle of Kansas and southwest Kansas and some other areas. As usual, what I always, what I try to do is I try to see what other cities are dealing with. Some days, it feels good that we all deal with the same problems, even though they're problems. Others days, I learn of new problems that cities are dealing with that could be coming our way, but more importantly, I get to sort of borrow the things that work from them and try to bring them back to the city of Topeka and find out what's not working, so if we, if we start talking about it, I can tell everybody, no, 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 it doesn't work in these other cities. So I will spend some time over the next week doing that, and hopefully I can see what some other cities are up to on a few issues, and we'll bring them back to the city of Topeka. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Hofer?
I don't know how many people saw this, but the zoo is getting ready for their first new addition. It's in their next expansion of the zoo. They are going to build a new enclosure and buildings for our Sumatran tigers. I had the chance to go out after the annual meeting and actually see the tigers up in close, and they're pretty incredible animals. close, and they're pretty incredible animals. They're also hoping that we can add to the number of tiger cubs that they have produced. I believe it's Thomas is our male, and he has fathered several cubs. Out of the in captivity tigers, I believe 10 cubs have been born at our zoo, which is the most out of any zoo in the US. And we have a younger female, hopefully, at some point they can produce another one. They're hoping that this project, they're going to, I believe it's triple their space, and they will have some viewing areas that we haven't had the option to see them from before. Plus, they're going to add a couple of vultures to that area. They have raised the majority of the funding and hope to start, I believe it's in June, to break ground and actually start building, and it'll be about a year and a little more till it is done. So that will be a very nice addition. It's going to be in the northwest corner, where unfortunately, the mountain lion lived, who passed a few weeks ago. So we're going to look forward to the new addition to the, to the zoo, and hopefully, we'll get more funding, and shortly after that, they'll start the next project, and it'll just be kind of a cycling to the zoo, keep adding and adding. So, if anybody's interested, they have many projects if anybody would like to donate. The other thing I was going to mention there, the severe weather's starting to ramp up, so everyone, please be safe tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things. One, a huge shout-out to Central Park Neighborhood Cleanup, which was last Saturday morning. Omni Circle put it together, did all kinds of outreach. There were over 150 volunteers there. They had lined them up, they, not everybody called in advance to register, but those who did had already been assigned a team. They got Keep America Beautiful involved, and had, had vests for everybody, and gloves, and trash bags. Central Park Christian Church really churned out a lot of people. Our police department came and was represented and, and walked over to their site to work, just like everybody else. Chief was there. Code Compliance had a small team there as well. Over 150 people. It was really great, and a great kickoff to the summer lawn maintenance season, and, there was a mowing group as well. Some young people came. Just a great start. And the other thing I wanted to share, oh, there was a group from Stormont Vale as well, with the social determinants of health and supporting that kind of action. The other thing I wanted to mention, we all know that the hotel has been kind of a hot item for all of us. Really appreciate all the work the staff is doing. I think it is still current news that we have three active negotiations going on. Kurt Young caught me at our last meeting, and let me know that, I guess that day, we gotten a five-year renewal on Kids Wrestling Kansas. That is huge, and if we hadn't had the hotel and had it on-site, they filled up the whole city. I checked with Sean Dixon at Visit Topeka. He said that generates us $1 million a day. So, way to go, everybody who was involved with sports and the hotel and Visit Topeka. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valdivia-Acla.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say about Central Park Cleanup, I had heard from a number of people there, and shout-out to PARS and Safe Streets for being there. Mandy and her crew were there, and as has already been stated, they're reimagining and doing great things in the community on their own. They can definitely put together proposals and know what they're doing without any of us having to tell them what to do. So it was great to hear that there was a good show up of folks there. Also, the fourth planting season of the Oakland Community Garden happened this Saturday. Planted tomatoes, planted different types of peas, and there was a really good show-up of people. Put new dirt in the beds, put new mulch out, and we have what looks like a really exciting additional strong list of volunteers. So thank you to everybody that showed up for the workday this past Saturday. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, I just want to wrap up and thank the governing body. You know, we don't always come at an issue or a problem from the same perspective, but I think that the end goal is always to try and do something that's best for the city and the community. And I think tonight, we saw a couple of those things happen, even with some good questions that may have given us some doubt, but then given some more thought, we move forward on it. And I think, and I know, that tonight's vote with regards to the development and union downtown is going to be transformational for our downtown area. It's going to make a lot of things really start to happen. You have to have the population down there to support those small businesses, and that's what we need to do. And I think that's just the first step, and a couple of other projects that we're looking at, that hopefully will continue to bring more population to Topeka. That's the thing we've talked about with growing our population, so we can get more rooftops, and, and we can get more people here, but we have to be ready for it, and we have to be looking ahead of us to make sure that we're not trying to just catch up with people, and we're looking forward. So, I thank the governing body for its deliberations and for its vote, and there is no further business coming before this body. The meeting is adjourned.[1776.33][1776.33][applause]